Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the December 11th meeting of the Columbus City Council. This is our last meeting for the year. We're going to take a break for the holiday. That's why we doubled up last week and had sort of a twofer in our meetings, but we're so glad to be here with you today. It might be a long one, so buckle up if you're here for the long haul, if you're at the end of the agenda. And also, it is my last meeting as mayor, and so I hope that I haven't let a day go by without telling you what an honor and privilege it has been to serve these last eight years, this tremendous city, with the state's best city manager, the state's best city attorney and assistant city attorney, with these fine elected officials here. We've done a lot of great things together, and I know we have with us today Mayor-elect Skip Henderson, and you are in great hands indeed. So I look forward to reading about the tremendous things that this city's going to accomplish in the future. It's also Counselor Mike Baker's last meeting. We're going to be talking about that a little more in-depth in a moment, but we're going to jump in to our agenda here today because we know a lot of you have important business, and we want to get down to it. But before we get to all that business, we're going to start, as we always do, with a moment of inspiration, and we're going to ask Reverend George Haugen to come forward from Edgewood Presbyterian Church, if you would please, sir, and provide the invocation this morning consistent with your faith tradition.
Okay. Thank you. Let's pray together. Lord God, we thank you so much for this city and for these officials that you've called and given the privilege to be able to lead and guide us in this city. We ask for your blessing upon our city. We ask for your blessing upon this meeting. We ask that you would guide all the conversation, the communication, and that your will would be done. We ask that you would give them your wisdom. And, Lord, at this Christmas season, we pray that you would fill our city and fill the people of this city with your love and with your hope and with your joy and with your peace, and that it would all be to your glory, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so very much, and please send our well wishes to Edgewood Presbyterian Church. We appreciate what you all do in this community. Thank you. All right, well, we are very fortunate today to have some young citizens well-versed in the Pledge of Allegiance who've come to help us. We have the St. Elmo Center for the Gifted. We're going to call you all forward here to the big desk, if you'll come stand, and Tiaja's going to get you a microphone, and as they assemble, if you all would stand and prepare for them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent job. You did so good. We want to meet you. If you would, take a moment and state your name and tell us how old you are.
My name is Addison Williams, and I'm seven years old.
My name is Alex, and I'm seven years old.
My name's Erin, and I'm 10 years old.
My name is Myla Gaines, and I'm eight years old.
My name is Kimberly Marina, and I'm 10 years old.
My name is Holden Siberi, and I am seven years old.
Great, okay.
My name is Lateryon, and I'm eight years old.
My name is Amelia Siberi, and I'm nine years old.
My name is Sydney Black, and I'm nine years old.
Fantastic, and we've got the principal here today. Please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about St. Elmo.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Counselors. I'd like to first introduce Katie Lopez. She is our esteemed Assistant Principal and a wonderful asset to St. Elmo. My name is Christine Hall. I'm the Director of Advanced Learning and Gifted Programs for the School District, and I have the distinct privilege of also being the principal for these fine young people at St. Elmo. St. Elmo is our resource pullout center for all of our state-identified gifted children in Muskogee County. We serve all 30 elementary schools. We do have two that are not served in-house at St. Elmo, but we have children from all over the district, and for that, we are so grateful. They're identified in the areas of creativity, motivation, achievement, and mental ability. So these students are not only high achievers, but they are the innovators and the makers of tomorrow, and we're very excited to bring them here to you and for them to be able to do the pledge for you this morning. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I understand there's a very special connection between this particular group and our city council, and so I want to turn it over to Counselor Judy Thomas, who I believe has a couple of relations in the room.
Well, Mrs. Hall is my niece, and I'm very proud of her, and Addison Williams, who attends Northside Elementary, isn't that right, Addison, is also my great niece. So these are two very special people to me.
Wow, wonderful, wonderful.
She's special to us, too.
Yes, Madison, so great to have you and all of you all with us, and I believe we have some parents and supporters who've completely given themselves away by taking pictures. But wave or stand up if you're here to support these fine young people today, and let's give everyone a round of applause. Well, thank you all for helping us out, and we hope you'll come back and help us again real soon, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day at school. Okay, we have a wonderful presentation next. You know, one great thing about being mayor, about helping to lead this city, whether it's in council or other capacity, is we have such generous partners in our community. And we want to call forward Courtney Brinson, who's the Regional Director of External Affairs for AT&amp;T, and as he comes forward, let me tell you a little bit about what he's up to today. Gosh, I guess it's been seven years ago now. We decided as a community, the Mayor's Commission on Unity, Diversity, and Prosperity, to revamp our civic celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King on Martin Luther King Day. We wanted to reach out to the younger generation, find something that was more interesting for them to participate in, and came up with the idea of the Dream Lives MLK Day, the festival, and it has been remarkably successful. And since its inception, AT&amp;T has been there supporting us, together with other wonderful corporate sponsors, of course, Aflac and Cenovus, TSYS, many, many others, some of the car dealerships in the community. But you've been there since the beginning. We are so grateful to have AT&amp;T, and I know I can, Counselor, excuse me, Mayor-elect Henderson, I don't know, why don't you come forward, too, and stand with Courtney. Mayor-elect Henderson has decided he's going to continue the Dream Lives Festival, and so we're so excited to see that continuation. Thank you so much for that and your leadership in that, and Courtney has a special presentation he would like to make.
I do. First of all, thank you, Madam Mayor, for those kind words, but I really feel like it's we at AT&amp;T that should be thanking you, because we're certainly, as Isaiah and I were talking about prior to the meeting, you're talking about certainly honoring and remembering an outstanding minister, a peacemaker, but more than that, now an American icon, and it's important that we not lose sight of his teachings and those things that he was about, and that we apply them to our lives. And in that way, it's a distinct honor and a privilege for me to present to Columbus today a support in the amount of $5,000.
Wow, my goodness. Courtney, thank you so very much for that. What a generous, generous gift. Thank you, yes. And Mayor-elect, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, Courtney, thank you so much for your engagement in this event, and I want to take just a second to recognize that this is one of many events that our mayor, under her leadership, she has created within the community, not only to memorialize a great American in Martin Luther King, but to bring this community together. So I think she is due a round of applause as well for initiating this event.
Thank you so much. And I tell you, we couldn't do it without folks like Judy Tucker and Mike King and way too many others to mention, so hope to see you all out there. It's the Saturday of MLK Day, weekend, excuse me, it's that Saturday, and it commences just before noon, just before when the siren goes off, we all converge down on the Liberty District, and it's a wonderful, wonderful event. So I hope to see you all there. Courtney, again, thank you so very much. Mayor-elect Henderson, I'm keeping the seat warm for you, so you're going to just be able to jump right in. All right, great, great. We have next a very special presentation. They're all special, but this one will really tug at your heartstrings. I want to ask Chief Boren, Chief Rick Boren of the Columbus Police Department, Officer Nate Norton, and all of those members of the Columbus Police Department, Special Operations, who are here today. We have a special resolution on the passing of our canine partner, Penny. Chief, good morning. Good morning to you all, and I will go ahead and read the resolution into the record, and it states, "Whereas Penny Drug Detection Canine with the Special Operations Unit of the Columbus Police Department passed away on November 13, 2018. Whereas Penny served as a drug detection canine with handler Officer Nate Norton for seven years, having over 700 deployments and receiving 11 state and national certifications. Whereas Penny's service led to approximately 427 arrests, the seizure of approximately five pounds of cocaine, 53 pounds of marijuana, five pounds of methamphetamines, 400 points of heroin, 800 prescription pills, and approximately $227,000. And whereas Penny retired due to medical conditions under the care and ownership of Officer Nate Norton four days prior to her passing. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby convey to Officer Nate Norton and the Columbus Police Department our sincere condolences and deepest sympathy. Canine Penny was outstanding at her job and will be greatly missed." I'll entertain a motion. All those in favor, please state aye. Let's stand for Penny and remember her well. Chief, it's always hard to lose any brethren, most certainly in age or otherwise, but it's these service dogs, they serve us so well, and I know you want to say a few words.
And we appreciate the invitation here today, and we most assuredly appreciate the resolution here today. I want to thank Officer Nate Norton for his participation with Penny during the time that he was Columbus Police Officer. Penny became a member of his family, and he cared for Penny at home with his family during the days and nights that she was with the department, and through the sickness, they cared for Penny, and we appreciate that. Penny was a valuable resource within the Columbus community. Penny, as you read, with her abilities, led to a lot of arrests in our area and arrests of individuals whose drugs were meant for the streets in Columbus, Georgia. We have two other canines at this time, but are not senior canines as Penny was, and we're in the process now of hopefully getting another canine within the department. Captain Kennedy, Officer Norton over my left shoulder here, have done well with the unit. They've done well with the animals, with the canine unit. We had some citizen participation with this, a local vet that took over the care of our canines at no cost to the city. We also had a local businessman that, upon the death of Penny, took care of Penny, and then the cremains were put in a container, a very nice container, an urn, and was presented to Officer Nate Norton and his family, and that's another example of our private-public partnership within Columbus, Georgia, with something like the death of Penny. I mean, people came out on the day that she made the last trip to the vet, all the officers gathered in the parking lot of the police department and said a prayer, and then she was taken to the vet's office from that time. So we appreciate what y'all are doing here today. I appreciate all these officers, and I appreciate the canine unit that takes all these drugs off the streets in Columbus, Georgia.
Most certainly. Nate, would you like to say anything?
Sure. I would just like to say thank you so much for honoring Penny today. Besides being a husband and a father, that was the greatest honor in my life is to serve with Penny. My wife would probably tell you I spent more time with my dog than my family, because she was always with me at work and at home. These ladies and gentlemen here, they work very hard to protect Columbus. It was a great honor to serve with them in that capacity. Thank you, Chief Boren and Chief Sluchek. Chief Sluchek, I don't know if he's here today, but he actually was the captain over Special Operations when we purchased Penny. Major Kennedy was also influential in the canine program, and Captain Kennedy now is leading that program. So I just really thank y'all today. It's a great honor. Thank you.
Well, thank you for loving and caring for Penny. She clearly was an incredibly valuable resource to this community. And like the rest of you all, we've got our best and brightest here with us, our Special Ops Force and some other distinguished folks from our police department. I'd like you to just come forward and say hello, say your name. Yeah, just introduce yourselves. No speech required, yeah.
I'm Captain Kennedy with the Special Operations Unit.
Sergeant Vince Dragnet, Sergeant of the Tactical Squad and Special Operations Unit.
Corporal Scott Taft, worked with the Tac Squad, also a canine handler.
Corporal David Rogers, Tac Squad, I'm also a canine handler.
Officer Corey Miller, I'm with the Tac Squad, Special Operations Unit.
Officer Carl Johnson, I'm with Patrol Unit, I'm a trainee with the Special Operations Unit.
Good morning. I'm Freddie Blackman, Major Officer Professional Standards.
Well, thank you all for being here today in honor of Penny, and we want to stand one more time and give you a round of applause. And Chief and Nate, I ask you to come around, let us shake your hand and present you with this resolution. Nate, thank you so much. Freddie, Ken, so good to see you. Yeah, Captain Kennedy, so good to see you. Thanks for coming out today. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate you and all you do. Boy, if that doesn't tug at your heartstrings. All right, as I said when we first opened up this morning, we've got a lot of celebration, and of course, I recognize Counselor Mike Baker. Indeed, this is his final meeting with us. We have been so very fortunate to have him as part of this group. His expertise as a CPA has been phenomenal. He's been a resource for me, and I know a resource for every single counselor sitting here today. And so with that, I want to turn it over to our Mayor Pro Tem, who has... Okay, hold on just a second. I'm so sorry. We actually have one counselor who really wants to be here and is having to leave work to get here this morning, and so she's asked if we could just postpone it a moment later. So, Mike, take the pack off. We're going to be celebrating you in just a moment, and we're going to move on with a few more items of business. Maybe Mr. City Attorney, we could set it at the end of your agenda. I bet by then she'll be here. So with that, we'll go ahead and call up John Redmond, our internal auditor. We endeavor to keep his plate full, and he has yet another request today.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney. Y'all are doing a great job of keeping my plate full, and I promise you, I will bring you a list of all the projects, but this list is longer than the list that Santa Claus has from the children, so I'll wait and bring that in January. I think you've got more than you need to deal with today. This is my final request for this year, and being the last meeting, it would have to be, for a transition audit of the Office of the Board of Tax Assessors. As you know, Ms. Milton is retiring at the end of this month, and we would need to do one consistent with our process, so just this time, I would ask your authorization to do so.
All right, we've got a motion and second. All those in favor, please state aye. Okay, and there you go, John.
Thank you.
I think you said you were going to get us a list. It doesn't have to be formal. It can be a council, or you can just send around an email. I'm sure everybody would just like to know what you're up to, because it's a whole lot. We have our minutes from December 4, 2018 council meeting that were provided in your packet and on ECAP. Were there any edits? We've got a motion that the minutes be received, and there's a second. I don't hear any edits, so all those in favor, please state aye. Okay, and we'll turn it over then to the City Attorney. Mr. Fay, you want to hit your button there? Okay?
Got it. Thank you, Mayor. Let me say on behalf of our office that it's been an honor to work with you also at your last meeting today. Through the years, we have seen a lot of legal issues arise, and you've dealt with them in a professional manner, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
The first item up, we've got to vote on an ordinance extending the moratorium on daycare type 2 and 3. It's ready for adoption.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion related to this item? All right, seeing none, you may record your votes electronically. All right, and it passes.
Second item is the FY '18 reconciliation ordinance. It's ready for adoption.
We've got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion related to this item? All right, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
All right, item three is the Enterprise Zone Extension Ordinance for another 10-year period. It's ready for adoption.
We've got a motion and second for approval. Seeing that there's no discussion, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Item four is the Aquatic Commission Housekeeping Ordinance that will allow the commission to meet bi-monthly. This is on first reading. If there are any questions?
We've got Counselor Davis.
City Attorney or whomever needs to address this, it's... I guess it says meeting bi-monthly. That's quite a lot of meetings. Is there a reason behind that's 24 meetings in a year, and normally with our...
No, it's six.
Just once every two months.
Bi-monthly is two months.
Bi-monthly, that's right. I'm sorry, going from monthly to bi-monthly, though.
Right.
So that would be once every two months.
Correct.
Okay, all right. My bad, I made a mistake. I thought it was twice every month.
Very common.
Yeah. All right. Okay, we'll bring that back then in January for a vote, Mayor.
Okay.
Next item is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a First Amendment to the Deferred Comp Plan. This would remove all references to auto enrollment for new hires in the Deferred Comp Plan. Any questions around the table? It is?
Yes, we have. And on a moment, Counselor Thomas.
The resolution that is printed here says that the administrative processes required to implement automatic enrollment are now in the plan, and it is desirable to implement the automatic enrollment provisions. I thought that our conversation last week was that we would not require automatic enrollment, that it would be at the employees... That's the one that's presented here as what we're voting on.
The resolution on the table, if you look at the last "whereas," it says, "After careful consideration, this council has determined that it does not wish to implement automatic enrollment at this time." So that's the one...
That's not what the resolution says that's on our agenda.
That was the prior resolution.
So there's another resolution that we don't have?
Well, it should be on ECAP.
Let's check and see which resolution... Lucy, can you check on ECAP and make sure counsel has the right resolution? If not, maybe we can get hard copies and get it around to them so they can see that language.
And I can read this into the record if you want me to, Mayor. I'll read the entire thing.
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Whereas Columbus, Georgia Consolidated Government, the plan's sponsor established the Consolidated Government Deferred Compensation Plan effective January 19, 1996, for the exclusive benefit of its employees and their beneficiaries. Whereas in order to implement a new service provider contract for the plan and make necessary updates to comply with federal tax law, the plan was restated effective May 13, 2016. Whereas the restatement originally called for automatic enrollment of employees hired or rehired after May 13, 2016, a provision that was not implemented due to concerns about permissibility under state law and other administrative processing issues. Whereas on May 8, 2018, Section 45, 1836 of Official Code of Georgia annotated, was amended to clearly permit public employers to implement automatic enrollment arrangements. Whereas the administrative processes required to implement automatic enrollment are now resolved, and the Deferred Compensation Board and staff have recommended that the automatic enrollment provisions of this plan be implemented effective January 1, 2019. And whereas, after careful consideration, this council has determined that it does not wish to implement automatic enrollment at this time. And now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, the mayor, on behalf of the plan's sponsor, is hereby authorized to execute the attachment, attached amendment to the plan to become effective immediately upon the signing of this resolution, and that will remove any auto enrollment requirements or references from the plan. And that's what should have been on ECAP. If it was not, it should have been listed first.
Well, it's counsel's pleasure to go ahead and adopt it. Was there a time sensitivity before the end of the year, Clifton?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I think we had to get it in before the end of the year in order to remove that various language that everyone was concerned about in our discussion last time from the entire plan, so there's no inconsistencies, and so that it's clear that we're not requiring an automatic 1% withdrawal to this additional plan. So again, counsel's pleasure, we have Counselor...
Mayor, would you make really clear then what we are voting on? We're voting on the, not the resolution that's printed here before us, but the resolution that the City Attorney just read.
Right. What's up for a motion, and there's been no motion yet, is to what the City Attorney has just read, which would in effect not only not... has just read, which would in effect not only not adopt the 1% requirement for an additional pension, but would remove any such language from our entire plan, because we need to make sure that there's no reference or indication that such 1% requirement's there.
I just want to make, make sure it's clear which one of these resolutions we're voting on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. So with that, we've got Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that council not approve the 1% deferred comp as read by the City Attorney.
Okay.
So you are in favor of what I read into the record?
I'm in favor of what you read, if it in fact said, "We are not going to approve the 1%."
Right, it does. It removes auto enrollment.
Just to be clear, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, any discussion, further discussion? All right, let's take an oral vote since there's some question about what exactly is in ECAP. All those in favor of what the City Attorney read into the record? All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, and it does pass.
All right. Auto enrollment is removed from the plan. Thank you. Next item is a resolution authorizing approval, the request for Columbus Tire Company to expand and receive tax abatements on the, under the Enterprise Zone Act. It is ready for adoption.
All right. We have a request, just walk through the requirements.
It is.
Okay, we've got, I guess, a request that the requirements be read out loud, a statement that they're standard requirements, and we just want to make sure they're read into the record, if they qualify.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, it's, as the planning department has noted here, this will create a certain amount of jobs, at least, well, at least five new jobs, estimated total of six, as required by the Enterprise Zone Employment Act, and a target of approximately 10% of those hired being qualified as low to moderate income residents. And then on the finance side, they'll have avalorm tax abatement based on the following schedule. 100% of the property tax is exempt for the first five years, 80% for the next two years, 60% for the next year, 40% for the ninth year, and 20% for the last year, the 10th year. And estimated annual fiscal impact is $2 million point 3, $2,375,000 investment in real property. Any other things I...
Yeah, let's see here. We've got Counselor Davis.
Just a question, Mr. City Attorney. You said the minimum job requirement is how many jobs?
Five.
Five, and they said they're going to produce six, right? Okay, and how do we, as a city, how do we, how do we maintenance these type of agreements to make sure that everybody's maintaining their obligation?
And as Rick walks to the podium, Mr. City Attorney, would you turn your microphone back on? Thank you.
Counselor Davis, we do this on an annual basis in terms of doing a survey, basically, and going back and checking on this. We have to also report the same findings back to the state to make sure we're in agreement with their findings as well as ours. So we do, we do make a check on it on an annual basis.
And I think the last one that came through was probably, what, two or three years ago? If I remember right, Bojangles', it was Bojangles' Restaurant, I believe.
Right, I believe you're right.
Two or three years ago. We do the same...
What was the other one? I don't either. But we, you're correct. This is probably in the last, the last two or three years, we've had maybe two, maybe three at the most.
And I don't know if we discussed that then, but we do do the same procedure with everybody that qualifies and...
Yes, we do. In fact, on this one, we had to make sure we actually held the application up until we got all the information in, make sure it did qualify.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right, I think that concludes the discussion. So, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one add-on resolution that's been distributed around the table from Counselor Davis, requesting the local legislative delegation to the Georgia General Assembly amend the general state law to require minimum staffing of two trained supervisors or managers at child caring institutions, foster care homes, and personal care homes between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and further requesting legislation to require that all such institutions and homes be accredited by a national accrediting body such as COA or CARF. But Counselor Davis might want to address that, but that's the request.
It's pretty much self-explanatory. I think some of these matters that we've been discussing and learning about as we go and trying to make the appropriate changes and all, I think we're starting to understand a little bit better, and these are, this action, I think, is very, very appropriate due to some of the circumstances, and again, the, the things that we're learning. So we do need help from the state. It pertains to supervision and oversight, and, you know, it's just, I mean, it's common sense, if you want to be involved in, in these type efforts, then you need to provide trained, well-trained professionals and have the appropriate supervision in dealing with, especially with these children.
All right. We've got Counselor Woodson.
Just one clarification, because I thought the personal home care includes the elderly? Is that correct? Or just the children?
At this, well, let me see if I can... First of all, you may want to, that's one of the things Counselor Woodson, we're working on. I think we found out that actually childcare institutions cannot be, according to the state regulations, cannot be part of personal care homes. So we are, I think that our staff is working on a new category for that, that they'll be presenting soon, so right now, we're just talking about child supervision. The state, if they want to look at some of these areas, other areas, that's fine. We haven't had any issues, I don't think, although there are some concerns dealing with senior citizens, some very grave or valid concerns, but right now, I believe that the personal care home category does not refer to children.
That's right. It does not. Under the current definition and the state law, personal care homes deals with adults, but this resolution would ask the General Assembly to look at all of it for staffing during the night hours and accreditation by a national body.
The reason I ask is because I know of a couple of personal home care, but they're for the elderly.
Right.
And they're small, you know? They don't have more than four or five people in that personal home care. So that was my reason for asking if this would affect them. How would it affect them if they just have, you know, four, four or five residents? So we would have to have, they would have to have two RNs?
No, just two adult supervisors or managers that are trained to deal with any situation. Doesn't have to be a registered nurse, but, and the General Assembly may decide to only act with respect to foster care homes and childcare. They may not even put anything in place to deal with the adult homes, but we're asking them to look at it all.
Okay. Well, I'm going to support it, but then I'm going to have a conversation with them to make sure we, we identify, because all our conversation's been personal home care for the young children that are more than six individuals and high risk. I don't want it to affect these nice, quiet personal homes that have, you know, four or five residents, and that's it, and they're not having any problems whatsoever. And it becomes a cost effectiveness to that small business, that small personal home care.
And to, and to the concern, I really don't, you know, you can strike, if that's your concern, we can strike that. This is really, the intention is dealing with child caring institutions and where you do need the appropriate supervision. So I don't matter, I mean, I don't mind the City Attorney striking that aspect of it, but I will tell you that, you know, we are talking about children, and personal care homes do not apply to children by state, by state regulations.
Not at this time, at all.
Okay. I can get better.
Our UDO needs to be changed.
Right. I can talk to later. So I'll support it, but I'll talk later in reference to that, because I don't want it to affect those that are good personal home care for the elderly, doing what they're supposed to do. They're being managed, they're being inspected monthly. I don't want that to affect them.
That's right. And there are many, many of them are complying with the rules.
Mm-hmm.
They follow the rules, and they have good supervision at night, but there occasionally are some that don't.
I agree. Okay, thank you.
All right. We have the City Manager.
Madam Mayor, I was just going to comment that, of course, there's 180 members in the House, and once legislation hits the floor, I mean, there could be amendments coming from places you would never imagine, so it could go in one way, and when it comes out, it's totally different than what you thought it was going to be, so that's just a risk you take, but just want to remind you, there's 180 members up there, and they all have opinions.
With that, I don't believe we have a motion, do we? Yes, we do have a motion, and I presume we have a second then. There being no further discussion, you may record your votes electronically.
Madam Mayor, that's not on the agenda.
Oh, because it's an add-on. I'm so very sorry. Thank you, Bruce. Let's do that again. There being a motion and second discussion having been concluded, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you all. All right. Now we have a very special presentation. We're going to queue up Counselor Mike Baker once again. Sorry for the earlier false start, but Counselor Baker, we're actually going to ask if you'll go down to the podium. Oh, yeah. Just a little bit of hazing. Nothing like a little bit of civic embarrassment to commend you for all your hard work over the years. And the Mayor Pro Tem is going to make a special presentation, just a moment.
I can take it down to him if that helps you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have mixed feelings about this. Mike has come very differently, and I ain't losing, because he's so, so efficient. Anytime I got a county...
Hey, I'm just leading counsel. It's not an obituary now. Unless you know something, I don't.
Anytime I have questions about accounting, CPA business, I just pick up phone and call no matter what time, day or night, no matter what day of the week it is. And I feel like I'm their mother, because they're so much younger. But Mike, we really appreciate all you have done for this community.
It's been my pleasure.
And when you ask Mike to do something, if he commits to it, he commits to it. I know you had a hard time in life when you skipped over there.
True.
I've been there before. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all you've done for this community.
It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
And resolution reads, "Whereas Michael C. Baker, CPA, has served on Columbus Council as a representative for District five since 2007. Whereas Counselor Baker attended Haraway High School, received a Bachelor of Business Administration in accounting from Georgia Southern College in 1981, became a Certified Public Accountant in 1985. Whereas Counselor Baker is a partner at Baker &amp; Latimer, CPAs, and is affiliated with the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants and Georgia Society of Certified Public Accountants. Whereas Counselor Baker has served as co-chair of the Board of Trustees and member of the Audit Committee for the ACCG Self-Insured Workers' Conversation Fund, Chair of the Endowment Committee for the Cunningham Conference Center at Columbus State University, President of the Columbus Chapter of Georgia Society of Certified Public Accountants, President of the Richard Middle School PTA, Treasurer of the Autism Hope Center, and on the Administrative Board at St. Paul United Methodist Church." So you can see, he's a well-rounded person. And whereas Counselor Baker and his wife Teresa have three children and one grandchild. Whereas the accomplishments of Counselor Baker are worthy of special recognition by this council. And therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby express our deep appreciation for the diligent and faithful service of Michael C. Baker, CPA, as the Counselor of Columbus, Georgia. Columbus is proud of his accomplishments, and we wish him ever success in the future. And the confidence has been framed, we'll be giving to him. The Mayor's going to bring it to you.
But we've got to move forward. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All right, let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank y'all. That's enough. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mike, we've got a logistical problem in that there's so many people here to congratulate you, I can't get down, but what I'd like to do is, why don't you say a few words? And then we'll...
Before you say a few words, I'm not there.
Oh, okay, we've got some more, and then when we're done here, we'll have you say a few words, and then you can come around and do the old handshake thing. How about that? Okay, we've got Counselor, oh, I'm sorry, you wanted to go next. Okay, we have the Mayor Pro Tem continuing.
I'll ask you to come up here. Mike, we want you to remember us, and every time you look at this clock, you'll think about your days as City Council. We want you to enjoy.
The hours. All right, Counselor Huff.
Good morning, friend. Congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you, sir.
For the public record, Mike and I go back to high school. We've met somewhere around age 14. Had some turbulent days back in the time when we first got there, trying to get everything together, and we had probably, we were the first graduating class from Haraway High School under the forced busing issues back in the, in the day. And our class was one of the closest classes ever, I'll put that against anybody ever to come out of Haraway High School. We accomplished a lot together, and it's just a real warm, fuzzy feeling this morning to know that we go back so far. And I found my way here where you were already serving the community. And all of the support, all of the wisdom that you shared with me, and the numbers, and me attending ACCG, where they think so highly of you, and they did send word at the last meeting a month ago to please congratulate you on your service.
Thank you.
So thank you for all you've done. Anything I can ever do, please don't hesitate to call. And Clifton Fay, the City Attorney, was also a member of our class. Thank you.
Wow. How great.
Thank you, Bruce. And those were some interesting years, the first years of forced integration was an interesting time, and for those who don't know, Counselor Huff was a leader back then at that age, so no doubt, he's where he is now.
Wow. Let's see, Counselor Prof. Barnes.
Mike, I know this is excruciating for you right now. He is such a, Mike Baker is such a low-key, humble, extremely humble individual. He can do something for you, and when you thank him, he's, "Oh, no, no, I thank you." You're that type of a person, Mike, but you have been a source, a valuable source of information for me on many topics, but particularly on the one, we are to be good stewards of the tax... particularly on the one, we are to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And you have been the one who has been the supreme watchdog. And I sincerely appreciate you educating me and informing me, always being available if I had a question specifically on the budget. And I just want to say thank you so much for your friendship and for always taking a phone call when I had a question. You're going to be missed tremendously.
Thank you.
And I'm not going to delay your torture anymore because I feel very, you're getting better and better the longer that you're staying there. But thank you so very much for being a friend to me and to the other members of this council.
It's my pleasure. I can assure you, I've learned more from each one of you than you learned from me. I learn something every meeting. I want to thank mayor, your service, and thank the council, your service. I also want to thank Mayor Wetherington and the counselors I served with under that administration. I don't know if there's such a thing as a mentor in this business, but if there is, Skip would probably be mine, as hard as that is to commit. He's politically, he's a lot older than I am. But I know we're destined for great things under him. And I want to thank, congratulate Ms. Crabbe as she'll be taking that seat. City manager, I know we probably didn't always agree on everything, but you and your staff are always professional. I thank you for that. Mr. Attorney Kirk, I know y'all probably think that council exists to make your lives difficult, but we thank you for the work that you've done. And also to my family, as y'all all know, family sacrifice too. So I certainly want to thank them. So thank you so much.
Oh, you bet. You got more folks want to say hello to you. So we've got Counselor Woodson.
Mike, I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Every time I called you, whether it's business or personal, you were always there. You were always gentle. You always said what it had to say. The words were always on time, always correct. Thank you for your guidance and you will be missed by this council and by the community. But I know that you was, we can call on you at any time because that's the person you are. And I could say to you is that you have been a blessing to all of us and I wish you all the joy, all the love and happiness to you and your family.
Thank you so much. And it's been a privilege to serve District Five where I've lived for sixty years, I guess, but also the whole city because, you know, most of the decisions that we make impact everybody. So it's, you have to think that through. So it's been a privilege to serve, to serve everyone, the entire city, it really has.
All right. We have the city manager.
Madam Mayor and council, I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank Counselor Baker. He made a statement earlier about city manager and his staff and not always agreeing. Let me just say that Counselor Baker has been one who listens to his constituents. He's an independent thinker, although I don't always agree with his independent thinking.
Probably a good thing.
But I've always admired Counselor Baker and I don't just say this here, but I've said it to staff. Counselor Baker, I want you to know this, but you have been one to stand for what you believe is right even when you had to stand alone. And I'm not just saying that to you, but if you ask my staff, that's how I've described Counselor Mike Baker. That is you. And he's an extraordinary person doing ordinary work for his constituents. And I am going to miss you, we are going to miss you around the table and you've been a true public servant. And I just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. It's been a pleasure.
All right. One more, two more.
Three more.
Counselor Thomas.
I've had folks in the community say to me, that Mike Baker, he doesn't say an awful lot. And my response has always been, but when he does, you better listen because he's got something important to say and it always helps us make the decisions that we need to make. It's been a pleasure working with you over these years, both when I was in the mayor's office as the chief of staff. I know Mayor Wetherington counted on you for your guidance and your help in the things that he proposed, as has Mayor Tomlinson. And as one who will give you a call between meetings and say, what do you think about this? You've always taken my calls, you've always given me good advice. And as the city manager said, sometimes you're the lone voice crying in the wilderness. But that's okay because I know that when you do that, you're doing that because those are your principles and that's what you believe is the right thing to do. So we're going to miss you and I would say come back to see us. I don't really expect you to be here often, but you're always welcome. And thank you so much for the twelve years that you've put on council. Thank you.
Thank you for your service and then the time you spent under Mayor Wetherington. I enjoyed working with you then too.
We've got Counselor Allen.
Thank you, mayor. I think Mike and I go back to playing church basketball together. And I was assigned the job of covering him in one game. And we've all seen the players that can't really keep up with the play of their sport so they hang on to the shirt or pull or whatever. Well, that was me trying to keep up with him. You know, transitioning into that, to this seat, I've kind of hung on his coattails a lot as far as the accounting and the budget and all that goes. I think we all, we all probably have done that. But I know at least twice, I asked a question and he told me, he said, I was going to ask the same question. And man, that just made me feel like, I've made it. So Mike, thank you for all your leadership and your guidance and consulting. I hope you don't charge for therapy because I know we've had a lot of, a lot of talks about a lot of things at city. But thank you for being a friend. Thank you for all your service here to the city of Columbus.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. You know, in the twelve years, one thing about Gary, he's never wavered from his principles. And I commend you for that and respect for that.
Thank you.
All right. We have the city attorney.
One more brief comment. I think Mike and I may go back to kindergarten, but I remember going through Haraway High with Counselor Huff and we had some tough times, but we had some great times. And we've watched the city grow ever since then. We've had a few growing pains, but it's still been a pleasure to work with you through the years and see what you've done for the city. There couldn't have been a steadier hand on the rudder of this council than Counselor Baker. And just again, want to say thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
All right. We've got Counselor Davis.
Mike, you've always been a great teammate. You've served our, you've served our city well and I have the greatest amount of respect for you. And just hearing all the comments around the table and things said, that ought to make you feel really good. And we really appreciate you. I just want to note that Mike has always been accessible and available. I really appreciated that from this man. We've had some great conversations, some great discussions, and I've always valued that. I've always valued his insight and input. And again, notably, and a lot of times during tax season, which even means even more, he would take the time away from his work and his way that he makes a living and just, and talk about matters. And I've always appreciated that. So thank you and, you know, wish you the best.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. When you talk to Counselor Davis, you don't have very many short conversations. But they've always been, they've always been enlightening and interesting and educational. They really have, Counselor Davis. I really have learned a lot from your point of view on different aspects.
Well, I'll make up that. I'll make up that to you. Just come see me at Starbucks.
There you go. There you go.
All right. And finally, we want to hear from mayor-elect Skip Henderson, who's joined us this morning and sat next to Mike Baker for many years.
Yeah, I sat next to him and I can't understand why y'all say he never talks. He never stops talking. It's just lucky that the Mike wasn't left on because we both wouldn't run out of here. But no, Mike Baker, everybody's known him a long time. Mike and I grew up in the same town and didn't meet till we ended up in the same fraternity of the University of Georgia. And by the way, he became president of that too. So everywhere Mike goes, he does his job with a quiet assuredness and confidence that people immediately recognize him, want him to take a position so that they can follow him. So I think the one word that comes to mind about Mike Baker's integrity. I'm looking forward to working with Ms. Crabbe. I'm a little disappointed at the expense of losing Mike Baker, but he's proven over and over again, I think, that you can say more with fewer words than some people can in a whole paragraph. So just want to thank him. He's, I still have his cell phone number, so we'll keep using. So just thanks for everything, all your advice.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, Counselor Baker, I think that we have thoroughly embarrassed you now. We just have one more thing and of course, I want to just say, without prolonging it, that I concur with everything that has been said. So just a few more accolades. We want to have you come around, shake our hands, let us thank you for your service, get you this resolution. Let's all rise and give Counselor Baker another round of applause. And Ms. Crabbe, we're so much looking forward to having you as a member of the body too. So thank you for being here today. She said, for those of you who can't hear, as she said, she had some huge shoes to fill and we know you're going to do that. So thank you again for, for being here. Let's see, we've got the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And if you will go down to the podium, please.
She didn't know she was going to get one.
Good morning.
I'd like to say to you, as I said to Mike, I've very enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's been challenging, but it's been good. When the mayor came in the office, she got involved in GMA. And most people know I am very fond of GMA because I've learned a lot by going to training classes and the board meetings. And I really got a good handle on what you're supposed to do as city government. And so when the mayor became, when she became the mayor, she got involved in GMA. She made them think about things that they hadn't thought about before and do things they hadn't done before. And a lot of the mayors throughout the state of Georgia, she got them together to work together. And I just want to say thank you. Columbus has really grown a lot having you in that position. And I know Counselor Henderson, Mayor-elect Henderson, we'll have to watch it because it's going to be hard just not to call him Counselor Henderson. I know he's going to learn a lot. And I know he's going to be involved with GMA because he's been supportive all along. And so I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all you've done for Columbus and all you will still do in the future.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll still see you on Joy Reid's show. And the resolution reads thus. Whereas Mayor Teresa Thompson has served the citizens of Columbus as the city's first female mayor and director of public safety since 2010. Whereas Mayor Thompson was elected in 2010 as the sixty-ninth mayor of Columbus with sixty-eight percent of the vote and re-elected to the second term in 2014 with sixty-three percent of the vote. Made her the first mayor since the city's consolidation in 1971 to win reelection in the contested race. Where she's been named to Georgia Trend, one-hundredth most influential Georgian, six times and holds a national security secret clearance with the Department of Defense. Whereas Mayor Teresa Thompson has led Columbus and its city-county government through a time of innovative transformation, reforming its budget in the face of declining revenues, improving city services, revitalizing blighted and underutilized neighborhoods, reducing crime, increasing inclusive citizen engagement, and setting a vision for unprecedented vibrancy in the state's second-largest city and nation's sixteenth-largest consolidated government. Whereas during Mayor Thompson's tenure, Columbus, Georgia was named on the 2016 Top Fifth Best-Run Cities in America. Reduced crime by thirty-three percent, thirty-three percent from its height in 2009, including a thirty-four percent drop in property crime and a seventeen percent drop in violent crime. Balanced the budget for the first time in sixteen years using no reserve funds, provided city-county services at the remarkable prudent cost of $1,300 per person. Reformed the city's pension plan, saving taxpayers from thirty million dollars, and increased in funding of the general government plan to over ninety percent while preserving the valuable defined benefit plan for employees. Increased general government employee pay eight-point-five percent and police officers' pay eleven-point-three percent over a six-year period. Won a Harvard University Kennedy School of Business Bright Ideas Award for the Save a Pet Plan, which reduced the animal euthanasia rate from eighty percent in 2010 to twenty percent in 2016, and increased adoption by triple digits. Institute the tax allocation districts to encourage the revitalization of previously blighted areas, including Silla Village and the Liberty District, constructing new biking, walking trails, known as the Dragon Plate Trail, to create sixty miles of connected trails throughout the city. Let me say that again. To create sixty miles of connected trails throughout the city, including trails and streetskates in previously blighted areas, return two-point-two miles of the Chattahoochee River to its natural state, creating the world's longest whitewater course in an urban setting. Started the renaissance of the city's downtown, created a bustling dining entertainment district known as uptown, with some twenty-four restaurants, provided constituents with direct access to their mayor through quarterly forums called Let's Talk with the Mayor and social media, and partnered with the Chamber of Commerce and other stakeholders to set a multi-year vision known as Columbus 2025, to reduce poverty, increase the quality of our workforce, and increase prosperity throughout Columbus. Whereas the accomplishments of Mayor Teresa Thompson are worthy of special recognition by this council. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby express our deep appreciation for the diligent and faithful service of Teresa Thompson, Miss Mayor of Columbus, Georgia. Success in her future, we wish her ever success in her future endeavors. I move for this adoption.
She forgot she had to preside.
She forgot she had to preside.[598.20][598.20](laughing)
I did my last.
Yeah.
All the favor that.
(inaudible).
And, and, Mayor.
Yeah.
Just thank you.
Well, thank you. It has been a real joy to serve with you, Mayor Pro Tem, truly, and all of you. There's not a thing on that list that wasn't done by the Columbus citizens and by this great body and by this tremendous staff that we have. I'd put them up against any in the country, all of our department heads, our city manager, city attorney. It is amazing, the level of professionalism and expertise we have at this city. And I will tell you what, you know, politics is politics and things happen and you see it in the paper, but I've seen how other councils work. I've seen how other commissions work across the state. We've got the best. We just do. And, um, and so, I don't care what particular curveball we get thrown on any particular day, on any particular issue, the citizens of Columbus, Georgia can rest assured that this city government and that this council is going to represent their interest and do tremendous things for the city of Columbus. And I, I do want to say, I'm so very fortunate to be sandwiched between some really great leaders. I've got, of course, Bob Portishev and others before him, including Bobby Peters, a great Mayor Weatherington, all of them who I had the opportunity to draw upon their wisdom on many occasions and who provided me support if I should need it on some difficult issues. We didn't always end up needing it because we ended up, as a community, pulling together and getting on the right course to great things. And now, of course, to be able to pass the baton to the great Skip Henderson is something that provides great relief for any leader, is that you know you leave it in better hands. And so, I very much look forward to seeing the great things you all are going to do together. And I'm going to enjoy my normal citizenry of Columbus, Georgia, knowing that this city is well-led indeed. So, thank you all so very much for this today.
Um, wait a minute. You're not in charge right now. You too. When you look at this talk, I want you to think about us.[766.12][766.12](laughing) And, um, it's different, but I love it.
Oh, thank you so much.
And there's some other people wanting to say so too. But, you know, you're so fast.[792.12][792.12](laughing)
Well, I'm sorry. I'm going back down. Uh, thank you. Thank you.
We'll keep this up here.
Thank you. That's Christian. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks. (inaudible). She's in the driver's seat now. Oh, thank you. Great people.
Okay, next we have Council Woodson.
Thank you. Mayor, I just want to say it's been an honor to serve with you. I've served with Bobby Peters, with Bob Portishev, with Ron and Ten, all of them. And you had big shoes to fill.
Yeah.
And you did a great job. We always didn't agree on things, but we always can be able to respect one another's opinion. You have made a big difference as mayor, and I'm really proud of you because you are a woman, a woman that had lots of challenges, a lot of conflict, but yet you stood up straight, strong, and you faced it. And I always admire that, that all the challenges and tribulation you brought, you stayed tough. I only seen you tear your eye only twice in the eight years, and I was amazed to see you tear your eye. I didn't think you would do it.[932.12][932.12](laughing) And I was very surprised. I've learned a lot from you. I know we've had our differences, but at the same time, you've done a great job. And we can't always agree 100%, but the important thing is to respect one another's opinion. You will be missed, but I know that you will be more involved, and you know we will still look up to you and ask you questions. And I have your cellphone.
Sure.
And so, I'll give you a call.
Thank you.
And I would say to you and to Trip, thank you. Thank you for allowing you to serve, to put up with all the things he did, but yet he was always a smile and always supported you. And I want to say to you, God bless you and your adventures in life. I know you will do well.
Thank you. And thank you for mentioning Trip. He has loved being the first gentleman of this great city.[982.31][982.31](laughing) So, thank you.
City Manager Hughesley.
Um, Madam Mayor, I want to take this opportunity to say to you, thank you for your service to Columbus, Georgia. Thank you for all of the text messages.[1003.12][1003.12](laughing) Thank you for all of the emails. Thank you for all of the phone calls. The Mayor Pro Tem said, "It's been challenging but good." It has been challenging but good.[1022.12][1022.12](laughing) Thank you for your leadership. It's been creative, innovative leadership, and you've not been afraid to lead. You've not been afraid to be bold and courageous. And because of that leadership, you've made Columbus, Georgia a better place to live. And when you were bold and courageous, not just here in Columbus, but all over the state of Georgia, you can talk to GMA, ACCG, and anyone else, but when you've been away from Columbus, it's been bold, courageous leadership, and it's all, it has always been about Columbus, Georgia, because of your love for Columbus, Georgia. So, thank you for all that you've done for this community, and thank you for being a friend.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right. I'm afraid to leave until she tells me too now that she's.
Did it turn in the face?
Okay. Well, she knew I was gonna say something anyway, being a lawyer.[1098.12][1098.12](laughing) The mayor is sort of like a younger sister. I was ahead of her about nine years at Emory Law School, but she worked hard and got through there, and, uh, you know, she's gone on to great things. I know in the future, she's gonna do some more great things. We usually agreed on most legal issues. We had a few spirited debates, but we're gonna follow your career closely and hope Trip will get to the mountains more often now.
Yes.
But we have enjoyed it. It's been a pleasure to work with you over the years.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Clifton.
Council Baker.
And Mayor, it has been a privilege and an honor. There were some issues that, when I came on council, that a lot of people thought maybe were untouchable, you know, pensions, healthcare, and I didn't know if we could make any progress on those, but under your leadership, we did. And if the taxpayers really knew the dollars that were involved there, they would come in as well. So, you had the ability to face issues that I once was sure they could be faced, but under your leadership, we did. And I thank you for that.
Thank you. Coming from you, that means a great deal.
Council Garrett.
Madam Mayor, it's been neat watching, because you took office right when I got back from law school, and I grew up in Columbus, and I've seen the great things that have happened, and Columbus is on the up and up. I thank you for your service. I thank you for, you've always been very direct with me. You've told me when you thought I was doing something right or when you thought, we disagreed. But I've always respected your opinion, and it was an honor to serve with you.
Thank you, sir. We expect great things from you too.
And that's it?
All right. Well.
Oh, Councilor Davis.[1220.12][1220.12](laughing) Oh, I could have, I could have. Council Davis.
I always call you Madam Mayor up here, but I think I can call you Teresa now.
Sure can.
Is that okay?
Yes, sure can.
I know you like baseball, and you use some.
All the time.
Baseball analogies, so I think it's probably appropriate that I describe some of our relationships and working together with you over the years through, through baseball. But you signed up. You signed up to play, and, uh, and you've taken that serious. And you've always approached your duty as a, at a level of responsibility that's admirable. And so, when you went to the plate, you knew that you were gonna be facing some tough challenges, and you were gonna be facing some pitchers that were probably easy to handle, and, uh, you could, you could work through that. But you've also faced some tough pitchers, and they're throwing you some tough pitches, mainly this body here. We've thrown you some really, uh, some really tough pitches. And there's been some times that, you know, I guess from our relationship, that we've been on the same team, and there's been some times that we've been on the opposing teams, you know, but we both, I think, have had that mutual respect to where we go out. We know what we're supposed to do, what the challenge is, what the goal is, and we do that wholeheartedly and with spirit and try to do the best we can. I've always appreciated that from you, just your character, and whether we agree or disagree, I, I think that the, the focus was on the goal.
Yeah.
And obtaining that and trying to make it happen. But at the end of the day, I think you always knew that whatever we did, whatever we agreed on, and you've always been acceptable when it comes to acceptance of that, you've always taken that way. There's been some tough battles, some tough challenges and all, but you've always accepted that, and you realize whatever the outcome was, it was gonna be the best thing for the citizens of this community.
Yeah.
And for that, I respect and appreciate you, and thank you for your service to this community.
Thank you so much. That means a great deal.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Lake Henderson.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just want to just say thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your courage. Thank you for setting the bar so high. Councilor Baker touched on it. There were some tough issues. In public service, particularly at the local level, can be, I think, one of the biggest challenges that anybody pursues as an elected official. You're constantly held accountable. You're constantly critiqued, and to have the courage to be able to drive forward to do what you know is in the best interest of the, of the citizens of the community, sometimes very difficult. Always admired your courage. I've admired your vision, and, and I have one of the toughest jobs in the world, number one, following you. But number two is, how do I use your number and access you just enough so you and Trip don't move permanently to the mountains where we can't get you? But you've done an amazing job. There are very big shoes to fill, and I look forward to counseling with you and looking for your input from time to time. Thank you. Congratulations.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you to all my colleagues for that wonderful, wonderful presentation. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you all for sitting through all that, and we're going to try to move as expeditiously as possible. We, we thank you for your patience. That does conclude the city attorney's agenda.
We need a short executive session later on personnel and litigation.
Okay, great. And we will get to that. And we now are entering the public agenda. I want to call forward Mama Love, who's here to talk to us about evictions.
I'd like to say a blessed, blessed holiday to everybody. We know we got Christmas coming up, and we also got the new year coming up for those who God grant us to go into a new year. My name is Avis Mama Love Lewis, and I come before you this morning to talk about eviction. This is a topic close to my heart because I was evicted. I thank God for letting me be evicted because I never know what it was before. My eviction hurt me very hard because I feel strongly I was to be evicted for speaking out against Kenham Parker, Duncan, and Davis at speak-to-the-mayor's-meeting, when my neighbor told me the house was full of fleas before I moved there. Somebody said, "Don't go talking because nobody in Columbus will rent to you." And I said, "When I wear this thing, I'm God servant, God daughter. I work for God. I went and spoke, and I was evicted." But what she's handing you is paper telling you about eviction. Now, it had been declared epidemic. I would like for you to take the next year to learn more about it. I would like for everyone to take the year to learn more about it. People just don't get evicted because they don't pay their rent. People get evicted for other things. I hope you go into the year learning about it. I hope you look at ways to improve this epidemic. I served my country 21 years, two Air Force AFC training, six Army MOS. I know how to follow rules. I was evicted wrongfully for speaking out, but like my mentor, Harriet Tubman, I would do it forever, like God want everybody to do. You know, you stay silent, but eventually, it may come to your door. Also, I want to flip the switch. I heard about maybe the city council would be changed to where the time for speaking on public agenda will maybe be decreased. I want to tell you about my episode when I went back to Montgomery Alabam. Before I left there, we had time to speak. When I got back, I found out it would decrease. And guess what? My councilman turned on me because I had helped opponent win against him when he was running for another office. But the opponent, to me, had things that the city of Montgomery Alabam needed. So, when I went back, he was my councilman. He turned on me. And then, you need to think about reducing the time and talking about you let some people speak maybe, because it happened to me when I went back. They reduced the time. Okay, and guess what? They said, "Mama Love, your time is up." Then the next person got up there and spoke, and the person said, "Oh, I know my time is up, but let me keep on talking." It happened that several me. Another person got up, "I know my time is up, but let me keep on talking." And they don't allow who they want to keep on talking and keep on talking. So, think about it. Think about it, because there might be some lawsuits about favoritism, discrimination, and other things. I see I got two minutes left. I want to take this time and say, please, please, think about what you're doing to eviction. It's not only because people don't pay their rent. Look at what reason can, people can be evicted. Look at them closely and do something about it. If you can't do something about it, you can speak out about it, and you can go to the right person.
Yeah.
And I'd like to say again, I hope each and every one of you have a blessed day, have a blessed new year, and remember who put you here. Like I said. I believe all mine has come from God. They're called blessings, baby, and can't nobody take that away from nobody. When God give it to you, can't nobody do you no harm. Thank y'all. I love y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mama Love. All right, next we've got Shante Wilson. Is Ms. Wilson here? Okay. How about Joanne Cogle? Is that correct? Ms. Cogle would like to speak to us regarding zoning issues at 710 Front Avenue. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you would just state your name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Joanne Cogle, and I live at 732 Second Avenue in the Historic District. Let's see about that. Let's stay. I own CrossFit CSG, which is currently located at 710 Front Avenue, and moved here with my husband about nine years ago and have been a small business owner in Columbus for those nine years as well, specifically in the Historic District and in, in the Uptown footprint. CrossFit CSG is a functional fitness facility. We service military physical training or PT, yoga, children's classes, children's yoga, and in addition, Columbus State University classes as well. Recently, moved from the Uptown Broadway location to Front Avenue because it was a bigger space and more conducive to our members. And we worked with Hatchet-Birdshaw River Valley Regional Commission, I think Patty's over here, as well as the City of Columbus, CSU, and had some other assistance from Uptown Columbus and many other people to move to that Front Avenue location. In the event, in, as we moved, we went through the proper procedures, or what I, what I believed was the proper procedures. We were issued a building permit and permitted to continue with our renovation, if you will, or putting in bathrooms. And when we went to file for a business license and CO, we were informed that we were not zoned to be in that particular building as well as in the Historic District. So now, my business is in jeopardy and as well as, as another business that I put on, that I have in, in the Historic District and in Uptown Columbus, putting on events. And so, basically, I'm here to ask the council for 120 days to remain open and to continue business while we sort out some zoning issues or some creative ways to, to work through this situation so that as a small business owner, I don't have to displace my members as well as shut my livelihood down.
All right. Thank you. Got several counselors who would like to speak. Let's see here, we've got, oh, I'm sorry, trying to get Counselor Woodson on here. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I want to ask staff a question.
Yeah, let's, yeah, why don't we go ahead and let the city manager?
To respond to her questions, I'll, we won't call staff at this time. If you've got a question, I'll be happy to answer it. But if I may, Madam Mayor, let me just say that, and, and certainly you see the timeline presented by Ms. Cogle.
Cogle.
Cogle. Let me just say that on August 8th, as you see in her timeline, a permit was applied for, for 710 Front by a Wayne Gentry of Wayne Gentry Builders, Inc. And what staff knew at that time is that this is a building that's owned by quasi-state agencies, the River Valley Regional Commission. And so, that permit was approved, and on August 29th, the plans were approved by Plans Examiner, Terry Vaughn, and, and the permit was issued. At that time, I think the understanding and assumption is that it's 710 and it's the River Valley Regional Commission, and there was no mention or evidence of anything else or anyone else occupying that building other than the Regional, River Valley Regional Commission at that time. And so, the understanding is that that's who it is for. And on September 5th through October 4th, the building and trade inspections were performed. On October 4th, a certificate of completion was issued after all building and trade permits were approved. The leasing told by the builder inspector at that time to come to inspect and code office to obtain a certificate of occupancy. And when they went to apply for a CO, Ms. Cogle came to Inspections and Codes to apply for that CO, and at that time, they learned that it was a gym, a CrossFit, when that had not come up before. And so, at that time, the same person who issued the permit, Terry Vaughn, denied the CO because it was not an authorized use in the Historic District in according to the Unified Development Ordinance. And so, that CO was denied, and then sometime later in November, there was a citizen complaint about a CrossFit gym being there in the Historic District, and it's not an authorized use. And, and so, with all of the back and forth, I asked the Inspections and Codes Director, John Hutchinson, to go and issue a, an order that would allow them to continue through December 31st midnight. And after December 31st midnight, unless something came out of, comes out of council, that I would bring it to council and bring it to your attention, unless you direct us to extend the, the number of days that would allow for a time to go through a special exception amendment process with the UDO, then that business would be shut down January midnight, December 31st. And so, I wanted you to understand that it went through this process unknowingly that it was a CrossFit gym, and when it was acknowledged that it was going to be that, the CO was denied by the very same person who issued the plan permit. And, and so, also wanted you to know, I have absolutely no issue or concern with the gym because of how it operates, but the UDO is very clear. And in order to continue to operate something like that, council would have to amend the UDO to allow for a special exception, and on a case-by-case basis, when things come up, you address them at that time. So, I wanted to share that information with you before we get into any in-depth discussion on this matter.
All right, we have Counselor Woodson.
I understand that we're going to have a little further discussion on this matter before we go ahead and see about granting the 120 days. It's my understanding from the mayor. So, let me see what she's doing now before I do anything. Okay.
Okay. Let's see.
I'm waiting. We're going to refer.
Ms. Cogle, we're going to discuss this further and then come out with a, a decision at the conclusion of the meeting about your request, if that's okay. Since this is in public agenda, it's sort of an odd place for it, okay? But, but you've done the right thing, and, and we hear you, and I know you've been in, in contact with some of our folks, so we appreciate it very, very much. I'm just trying to keep the, the process correct, okay? Let's see. Pops, did you want to?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, I know we're going to do this, we're going to discuss it, but, you know, the citizen did the right thing, all the right thing. I want you to know from the beginning. And we're going to discuss this issue, but I know, I have a feeling that this council's going to do the right thing in this issue, because you went through the right steps. And so, that's, I just want you to know from the beginning, that's my position on this issue either.
Great. Thank you. And I think, you know, because you've talked with staff, there's just, you know, there has to be some adjustments. We have to consider certain adjustments in the law and so forth, and so that's what makes it a little bit more complicated.
Appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate you and, and being here today, so, thank you, and, and we're going to continue to discuss it, and hopefully you'll hear something here soon. So, Mr. City Manager, did you have anything further?
That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Let's see here, we have next, Mr. Charles Todd. Is Mr. Todd here?
If you just give your name and address, and we'll set the timer. Thank you so much. My name's Charles Larry Todd, retired fireman for 25 years, and I live at 704 Lowell Ridge Lane, Catala, Georgia. We've, we've gone through this many years, arguing about pay raises and things like that. It's come down to the point, at times, it was set up if the active firefighter's got a raise, retirees got half of that amount. It has come down to nothing. We don't get, the last three raises I've had was $2.11. Now, can you live on $2.11 added to your check? Insurance goes up, so that makes my check smaller, along with all the other guys. We have lost about 10 firemen this year. Their family needs the money to live on. I know the council gets a good raise, and they got a good raise because of the safety departments of fire, police, the sheriff, the EMS. We all put our lives on the line. We had one girl that was shot and laid next to the ammits for quite a while before chief portrayal could get to her and get her away from that ammit. Things like this happen to us, and we'd appreciate, this coming year, you would evaluate everything and see if we can't get a raise on our check so we can pay our bills. And you know yourself, people don't mind going up on prices quick on you. We had, when I first went on the fire department, we paid into the retirement. In 1985, the city took our retirement money that we had invested in it. And then, they said they were taking it over, but when I went to, the way I found out about this was when I went to retire, I asked, "Was this involving the money I'd paid into?" No, that city, that money belonged to the city. Out of my check, once you get a check, that's your money. Anything that comes out of it, you've bought. So, I, I just ask y'all to please look at this situation. We've had firemen to quit because they found out they could get more money somewhere else. And we can't afford to lose people that put their lives on the lines for everybody. I think it was Mr. House, Councilman House, I talked to here a while back on the phone, told you about all of this. And it's just bothering me more and more each year. Do any of you have a question for me? If you don't, I appreciate the thought and the efforts that you can think of next year to help us out. Thank you.
I have no questions. The next person, it's Miss Commons Swan. Is that Miss Commons Swan? Is that Miss Commons Swan? Okay.
Good morning. Elected, selected officials of Columbus, Georgia, and citizens whom reside in Columbus, Georgia. I am Audrey Holston Palmore. I presently reside at 1035 Lawyer's Lane. On today, I am moving forward with the concern I have as a citizen of Columbus, Georgia. In order for me to appear on today, in order for me to appear on the public agenda, I made proper communication and turned the application over to the Clerk of Council. The Clerk of Council office is located at the Government Center on the sixth floor. My presentation of communication on today regarding my concerns, to which I have stated, stood at this podium and express, remains the same concern I have expressed to the current Public Safety Director, Teresa Pike-Tumlinson, for a total of 13 time, 13 occasions at this podium before the elected government officials. I am here today to request, to express to Teresa Pike-Tumlinson my need to meet I am here today to request, to express to Teresa Pike Tomlinson my need to meet with her. I have also taken the time to schedule an appearance at this podium to express to the City Manager, Isaiah Hugley, my request to meet with him about concerns I have regarding a major violation of the Columbus Parks and Recreation Division of the Columbus Consolidated Government. I have made an attempt to meet with Isaiah Hugley since April of 2018. I have made an attempt to meet with Teresa Pike Tomlinson, the Public Safety Director, since December 2017. Today is Tuesday, December 11, 2018. At this time, at this appointed time, I'm going to give, the young lady from the Clerk of Council's office has already officially given the, an envelope to each elected counselor of the City of Columbus, Georgia. This is an envelope that I would appreciate each elected official, counselor, to fill the envelope with their name on it with written communication. I would appreciate if each counselor that was given an envelope, I would appreciate if you would put your initials on the line below your name for the purpose of me giving back to the Clerk of Council the envelopes. And I would appreciate, as I had asked in the past, that you give me some type of written communication, since you have been present and you are aware of the fact that I've been here requesting. So this time, I'm providing you with the envelope, and it is regarding my efforts to request a meeting with Teresa Pike Tomlinson and Isaiah Hugley. I shall pick up the envelope. Thank you. I shall pick up the envelope with your name on it and your signature to validate the fact that you did receive an envelope. I asked back in October that you provide me with your thoughts about the continuation of me asking for a simple meeting as a bona fide citizen residing in Columbus, Georgia. I shall pick up the envelope with any response given on next Tuesday, December 18, 2018, at the Clerk of Council's office by the close of business. I am planning to be at the Clerk of Council's office at 4:45 PM. I have requested feedback through written communication from each elected official before this particular time that I just spoke of. I am looking forward to a response from each of you with bona fide signature. These props have been utilized by me in order to communicate in a written way that I am very serious about what I am coming before the council for. This is a prop I've used here at this podium. This is a prop that I utilize while publicly picketing about the same issue. Thank you for your attention. I am looking forward to picking up an envelope with a message communicating to me your thoughts as elected, as an elected official about my concern.
Are you finished? It's terrible, it's terrible.
I have two minutes. If there are any questions, I'm willing to answer any questions that may be presented to me at this time. Ma'am, you've cut off my time.
Your pardon?
My time has been cut off, it's stagnated right there at two minutes.
Okay. She's back on, Madam Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much.
And I still see no questions from the council. But I can tell you, I will not be addressing the issue. That's between you and the mayor.
The Public Safety Director, ma'am.
You're in the Public Safety Director, and I don't have any opinion about it.
Well, it's recorded what you're saying, so, you know, you don't.
I'm telling you, I would not be writing you.
Well, ma'am, I only asked.
I understand that.
You're grown, I'm grown, no one can make either one of us do anything.
I'm telling you.
I'm asking that you put it in writing.
And I will not be doing that.
Ms. Palmore, thank you for your time.
Well, I scheduled, this is a very important issue to me.
Okay, I think your time is up.
My time is up in 49 seconds.
Okay, well, we'll wait 45 seconds.
I'm waiting.
Okay.
You're no different than me, you have to wait.
Madam Mayor Protem, let me just say that, you know, and this is, I've addressed this before, Ms. Palmore's daughter, who's an adult with a child, had an event at one of our parks, Carver Park, a birthday party, and the restroom was inoperable, and that was known at the time, the outdoor restroom. And when she came to see me, her adult daughter, because the restroom was not operable and was known ahead of time, I decided that we would reimburse her her rental fee of $50. And I decided that we would offer her the use of another Ports and Wreck facility, any facility in Columbus owned by Ports and Wreck, at a time that's convenient to them, at no charge. I provided that to Ms. Palmore's daughter in writing, and so that is still available and on the table. And I did it as a way to hopefully satisfy them in that the restroom was inoperable. And so I have not heard from her daughter since I provided that to her daughter in writing, who's an adult. And Ms. Palmore continues to say that she wants to meet with me about a matter, the agreement was signed by her adult daughter, and paid, the fee was paid by her adult daughter, and it was reimbursed to her adult daughter, and I am happy to meet with her adult daughter if she has questions, issues, or concerns. I am happy to meet with Ms. Palmore on any issue related to business of Columbus, Georgia, other than that issue. And so if she wants to meet with me about any other matter, other than that matter that is solely with her adult daughter, I am, my door is open. So, I'm there to meet.
Okay.
On any city business.
Thank you. We've got the Mayor Protem, might make a comment.
Well, if you want to meet with us, you can meet. But we've been going through this for more than six months, and nothing we're gonna do will satisfy her. And her issues with the Public Safety Director, the mayor has said what they have meant, and no matter what you do or say, it's not gonna satisfy her. But this council, I don't ask this council to get involved in that, because that's not our responsibility.
And I concur, I just wanted to make it clear to those watching by television or those here, the request to meet with me, and I'm open to a meeting. Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. That concludes our public agenda. The city attorney reminded me that we got so excited, let's see if we have enough councillors, yeah, we got so excited, congratulating AT&amp;T for all their help, we forgot to vote on the resolution accepting the money. So we've got a motion, is there a second? All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, it does carry. All right, with that, we're going to head into the City Manager's agenda, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Hugley.
Madam Mayor, first on my agenda is an extension of an MOU for Westville. We entered an agreement with them on August 13, 2013, they came in, they've asked for a number of extensions, as they continue to work to complete their work. And this extension would extend them through November 30, 2018. And so we are asking you to provide them this requested extension.
We've got a motion and second for approval, is there any discussion related to this item? Seeing none, you may record your votes electronically. Let's see, and it does pass.
Madam Mayor, it's, some of the representatives of Westville are present in the audience, and I'm gonna ask them to at least come forward, I think they've got a few photos they'd like Could you introduce yourself and?
Sure. Good morning, my name is Alan Sistrunk, I'm a native of Columbus, born and raised here. I've been away for 40 years, and I've just returned to town, and for 12 days now, I've been acting as Executive Director of Historic Westville, Columbus. And I was asked to come this morning to give a brief update on where we are on things. And the city has allowed us to develop this property. We now have 17 buildings, that's doctor's office, courthouse, residences, shops, blacksmith's shop, and antebellum mansions that have been all reconstructed on our site. They're now being refinished on the inside, and the artifacts, materials, and collections are now being ready to put in place. Do I use this? How big that shows up? That's an overview of the town right now, and the situation it stands in presently. And the, you can see the buildings that are standing, the courthouse is in the center of town, it is the only remaining wooden courthouse in the state of Georgia, and it was moved here from Chattahoochee County, Casita, Georgia. There's a picture of it more up close. It has only been recently reconstructed with the boards and the siding, and they were putting the cedar shake shingles on the building just two weeks ago. This has probably been one of the issues that has caused most delay. Originally, there was a plan somewhere, I don't know or familiar with it, asphalt roads were gonna be put in through an 1850's village. And it horrifies me, I hope it horrified other people, because certainly no one would recognize it with asphalt running through it. So, some of our Board of Directors got together and found a polymer that would glue Georgia soil together, so these roads will be laid with crusher run, like you would prepare for asphalt, and then Georgia native soil will be spread on top, and then a polymer will be put on to hold it in place, so it looks exactly like Georgia roads should look. The issue now is, it's winter in autumn, and the polymer cannot be applied unless the outdoor temperature is above 42 degrees, and the soil has been dry for three days. So we're waiting, and Thayer Bray, our contractors, are trumping at the bit to get this material out, which will lead way to many more things happening on site. They have the polymer in a heating room right now because they're afraid to let it get below 42 degrees, as it's not inexpensive. This is one of the churches, this is the Climax Presbyterian Church, that has been completely restored on site, it has a bell tower. You see all the framing around, these were change orders added, probably two-thirds of the way out, that we had to meet ADA specs to allow the handicap and fire egress and excess from the house, should an emergency occur. This is the interior of one of the houses, and I like to show this, because this painstaking reconstruction of this church, and it's the Damascus Methodist Church, board by board, bit by bit, the house had to be disassembled, the church had to be disassembled and moved, not like you would, excuse me, move a normal house on a flatbed. It had to be lumbered apart and lumbered together on site. And it's really a work of art, the ceiling here is painted by a traveling painter that would go to city offices, churches, auditoriums in the mid-1800s and paint for room and board. And so this is an original finish, the artwork that this traveling painter did on the project. Once again, this shows the state of the roads right now in Historic Westville, Columbus, and as soon as the weather gets ready, we're gonna finish those roads, move the collections in, and open sooner than later. I can't give you a definite date at this time, like I said, I've been here 12 days now, and I've just about summed up what I've found out has happened. This is one of the antebellums home, it's homes, it's the Billingsley House, it has a detached kitchen to the rear, and a nice presence on the road front. We're gonna try to whitewash those new railings, because they stand out, they kind of jump out when you look at them, and you're expecting an 1850's house. This is the McDonald House, it will be the offices and classrooms for Historic Westville, Columbus. This is the blacksmith shop, up and ready to go, the bellows is installed inside, it's basically ready to go and operate, because waiting on the roads has prevented us from moving in a lot of the materials needed. Just another overview of Historic Westville. Returning to Columbus, I was really proud of my city. It's come a long way, and I should thank you and the councils before you for allowing all this to happen. But I'm excited to be here, and I really think Historic Westville, Columbus will turn to be another cultural cornerstone for our city. Questions?
All right, let's see, we've got Counselor Thomas.
Mrs. Sistrunk, we have just passed the MOU to extend until March 31st. Is that gonna be enough time, do you think, or do we?
Heaven only knows, because we could have an 18-inch rain winter, and one of the contractors, William Bray of Thayer Bray, said, it could be March before we can finish these roads.
I don't know if we're under any kind of constraint, I just am trying to see if we need to keep doing this, or keep, have him keep coming back, or.
And you make a good point, I concur with you, because I know that we all know that January, February, and March, we got a lot of rain. And it's inclement weather that has impacted their schedule. And it's inclement weather that has impacted their schedule and so, you know, it's holiday season right now and that's only 90 days and they're making great progress. And I would say rather than tie them to March 31st, we could give them a little longer to do this work. I would say through June 30th.
Well, so Mayor, is it in order for me to move to reconsider our motion, our adoption of this request for extension and then move to amend it to June 30th?
Yes.
Right. So, we would have to have someone who voted in the affirmative move to reconsider.
So move.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then you want to make the...
And Madam Mayor, I move that the memorandum of agreement remain in effect until June 30th, 2019.
All right. Is there any further discussion on that item? All right, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that, then that substitute will be the final. And we have councillor Woodson.
Well, thank you councillor Thomas. I was gonna ask the question, so I appreciate you seeing, foreseeing the issue that can happen with the weather. And I thank you for coming before us and giving us an update because there are a lot of people in the community asking, you know, when is it gonna open? When's it gonna open? Everybody's excited. So, for you to come forward, I truly appreciate it as the district representative that we can say due to the inclement weather, we have to just be a little bit more patient. And hopefully by this summer, we'll be able to enjoy Westville.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you, Isaiah.
We've got councillor Pops Barnes.
Just wanna thank you, sir, for coming and giving us the update. Community's excited. I know the Barnes family is. My wife and I don't have to drive the grandkids down to Lumpkin now so that they can see how life used to be.
Right.
And whatever. And so, yeah, I'm glad that we're doing something like this. And we do realize that you're hampered by the weather. Appreciate Judy bringing this up here to the forefront. And so, it's like Christmas time for us. I cannot wait to, the opening day, to actually go there and see the candle making and the blacksmith shop and things of that nature.
They will be there.
Oh, it's going to be awesome. And just, so thank you so much for coming here and giving us an update.
All right, let's see here. I think that's it. Thank you so very much.
Madam Mayor, I actually asked staff to leave that last slide up there for a second because that is, that photo is what's going on off South Lumpkin Road in Columbus. And that, and it looks like that, right now, in Columbus. And so, it's a project that we should all be proud of. And so, thank you to Historic Westville for making such a move to our city.
I want to say with or without the board's approval, I haven't changed the name, but I've been saying Historic Westville, Columbus. Because I think our community has to take ownership in this organization that's putting this town together and feel as though it's their own. And that way, it'll help get the word around, create more awareness. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Next, Madam Mayor, I've got a street acceptance for Jamison Way.
We've got a motion and second for approval of the acceptance of Jamison Way. If there's no discussion, you may record your votes electronically. And it does pass.
I've got another street acceptance.
All right, we've got a motion and second to accept the streets of Ramey Drive, a portion of Confetti Bless Drive, and a portion of Showtime Drive, and a portion of Fashionada Drive, and a portion of Hi-Hat Drive. There's no discussion, you may record your votes electronically. All right, and it passes.
Next, I've got an adult drug court grant of $2 million with no match if approved.
All right, we've got a motion and second. Let me see here. All right, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought there was, there's no discussion. You may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Got a homeland security grant, $34,000.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to accept the homeland security grant for $34,643. There's no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And let's see, I think two of you all, let's see, councillor Thomas, and, yeah, there we go, we got it. Okay, it passes.
Next, I've got a request to accept the state farmer's market property at 3810 10th Avenue. We're all familiar with the old state farmer's market. And if this property comes into the ownership of the city and the state is willing to transfer this property to us, their grant opportunity is for us to clean it up and do what we need to do.
All right, we've got a motion and second. There's no discussion. Oh, we do have discussion. Councillor Thomas.
I just want to say, many of you know, a couple of weeks ago, one of our leading citizens in Columbus, Hal Everett, passed away.
Yes.
And this issue was one that was very, very near and dear to his heart. I wish we could have done this a month ago.
Yeah.
And I said that yesterday to his pastor, I said, "I wish we could have done this a month ago so Hal would have known." He said, "Oh, Hal knows."
Yes, he does.
He said, "He's watching and he knows." But I just think that it is worth bringing to the attention of the council and of the community, how much effort has been put into making sure that this property is used and used in a good and efficient and acceptable way. So, I'm glad that we are at the point that we are on this. Thank you, Mayor.
And our community reinvestment director has been involved, Laura Johnson, and she's at the podium, but councillor Thomas can't thank you enough for those words because we all know Hal Everett and, and he has been pushing this issue for years. And it's just unfortunate that the timing was such that it comes just a short time after his death, but he'll be happy.
Okay, we've got, oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Davis.
And thank you councillor Thomas and the city manager, but just a note for the record that this was his, Hal's initiative.
Yeah.
This was his initiative.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
All right. Did we vote? Yes, we...
No, we don't think so.
Okay, we have not voted. We have a motion and second, and I guess Laura's gonna speak. Yep.
I just wanted to kind of give a brief overview of what we're trying to do out there. And I have been working with Mr. Everett for over two years now on this project. And I too was hoping we'd be able to do this a few months ago, but we just got to a point to where we could actually move forward. So, just to kind of give you a little history, Mr. Everett was the one that approached the city and requested that we partner with this acquisition of farmer's market. The intent is the Riverdale, Porter Dale Cemetery Foundation, they want to clean the property up and they want to use it as park and green space in an attempt to connect the Riverdale and Porter Dale cemeteries. The property is currently owned by the state of Georgia and they are in the process of trying to dispose of it. But they can only quitclaim properties to another governmental entity. So initially, when Mr. Everett went to them asking if they could quitclaim the property to the cemetery foundation, they were told, they told them no because they were not a governmental entity, so it had to be the city that they could quitclaim the property to. And they have already been in agreeance to quitclaim the property to us, but it has to remain in a public purpose. So, if they quitclaim it, we have to always use it as a public purpose or for a public purpose. This is a map of the property. As you can see, it is right in the middle of all the cemeteries. You have the Riverdale to the south and then you have the Porter Dale to the north or to the east and, or I guess it's East Porter Dale and then Porter Dale Cemetery up here as well. Just wanted to show a few pictures of what this property currently looks like. So, it is abandoned, it's blighted. Homeless are living out there. We have a problem with skateboarders out there every day, skateboarding. And there's a lot of trash dumping out there and it's being vandalized. And currently, an inspections and code department has been receiving complaints about people dumping trash and stuff on the site. Here's a few more pictures of what it currently looks like. So, for the last two years, what we've been trying to do is some due diligence because we didn't want to accept the property and we had to determine how dirty it might be, actually. So, we had a phase one and a phase two environmental site assessment on the property and also a hazardous material survey. The materials that have been found as part of these environmental studies include lead asbestos and some petroleum products. All of these contaminants will have to be remediated prior to being able to redevelop that site. So currently, I was just, found out a couple, about a week ago, that we have an option to apply for an environmental cleanup grant through EPA. The grant notice was just put out November 28th. But unfortunately, EPA's only given us until January 31st of 2019 to apply. So, it's a really short timeframe. But it could provide the city with up to $500,000 to help clean up this site. Some of the requirements include, which I was saying, it has to be submitted by January 31st. And one of the requirements is, the property has to be owned by the city prior to us being able to apply for the grant. There is a 20% match, but CDBG funding is eligible to match other grants. So, that is a possibility that we could utilize CDBG funding for that match. And if you have any questions, please let me know. I did put a map there and it kind of really shows how that property sits right in the middle of all the cemeteries, so. And I did want to mention that we do have representatives from the cemetery foundation here. I don't know if any of them have anything that they would like to come up and say.
But if they will just stand and be recognized, at least.
No, we're not going to vote today.
We're still waiting to get the property transferred to the city.
I think we need to vote to transfer the property.
Okay.
To accept the property, and I think we already did.
Okay.
To accept the property.
Okay, good. Well, I was thinking about the grant. We don't want to, do we want to get the okay to proceed? Okay, okay. All right, I think we're set.
We've got a motion and a second. I don't think we voted. Nancy? No, great. Okay, there we go. So, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, I've got some purchases. You know, every five years, we redo, renew our banking services or we go back out and see if we're gonna have a different banking services vendor or vendors. And we do have a couple of things that are different. The first one would be option one, banking services, we're asking you to approve Sonova's Bank. They meet or exceed all of the qualifications that we've asked for.
Got a motion and second for approval. You may record your votes electronically. For which?
A.
A, just A.
Yes.
And I think we're missing one. Is that good? Yeah, we got it all.
And then B would be option two for smart card services, and it is also with Sonova's.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for approval. You may record your votes electronically. And I think we're missing one. Mayor Protem, can you push a little harder? There we go.
And option three is merchant services, and this is with N Court LLC. And you may recall that merchant services with N Court LLC, and that is the same vendor that Donna Willingham came forward with, with Recorders Court some time back and you approved it.
Okay. We've got a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Next, I've got uniforms for public safety departments.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. There's no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
I've got workers' compensation claims management services with USIS Amerisys, and we currently use them. You've approved them in the past before. We're asking your approval.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for approval. There appears to be no discussion. You may record your votes electronically. And it does pass.
Got legal services for real estate closings and home program.
Got a motion and second for approval. You may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Got a three-ton laboratory asphalt roller, it's $38,090.
Got a motion and second, and councillor Davis with discussion. Yes, sir.
The city manager, this is kind of a unique piece of equipment. Can you tell us about it and its proposed use?
I will have staff to come forward and tell you about it. And they are coming. But it, and this is the asphalt roller, Director Beegler.
I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
Asphalt roller, tell them how that piece of equipment works, is the equipment used by the city and DOT and DIRTT and...
We use the asphalt roller, we have the equipment to resurface roads. We don't take on, you know, miles and miles, but anytime there's a section of road, short section of road that needs to be resurfaced, we have to lay the asphalt in the roller and that piece of equipment is used for that.
Well, I guess, are we utilizing this, do we have a, some, do we have one of these now?
Yes, this is a replacement.
And how old is it?
I'm not sure, I'll be honest.
Well, yeah, let me just say that it's needed and I know councillor Barnes, you'll probably, if you... I don't just, okay, go ahead.
I must apologize, this is a new piece of equipment and it says that in the memo. We are using hand tamperers right now. And this is a roller that will allow us to do that much more easily and with less effort and work.
Why haven't we had one in the past? I mean, we're doing, are we doing the same type of work? Are we taking on more work and more responsibility for the streets?
Well, let me just say that, you know, some streets are a ways off from being resurfacing. But when we look at those streets, they're really in need of resurfacing. And I was gonna reference a meeting I had with councillor Barnes out on the site. And when we got out there, the staff, the staff had torn out a good section of road. They had torn it out down to the dirt. And they were using whatever they were using to redo this large portion of road to make the asphalt as best they could. Because, and those citizens and councillor Barnes are, they want that road resurfaced now, but it doesn't meet the test, the number, in where we're working. And so, this kind of equipment will help us put streets to a condition that they will hold out until we're able to get there. Or we can just go out and fill a huge section like you're doing a pothole and let that be it. So, it's...
Well, I understand, I understand its use and how this piece of equipment works.
I understand its use and how this piece of equipment works. But I... We've been doing that for years, right? I mean, are we just all of a sudden starting to take over?
We have been doing that for years, but in smaller sections.
Okay. All right, anyway, I'm not going to get deep in that. I guess my question, Bob's, a little more. What's the cost of this equipment?
$38,000.
$38? If it's going to be selectively used, which that's what you're describing, would it be better? I guess my question would be, would it be better to do a lease program versus purchasing outright the piece of equipment?
Well, I don't know, but we can look at it. If it was a $300,000 piece of equipment, I would say, yeah, a lease would be better. But for a $38,000 piece, I don't know that a lease would be better. But we can, we can take a look at that.
Well, you know, and I guess you... Who knows? You may be able to get two or three pieces of unique kinds of equipment if you utilize a lease program versus spending more money upfront. This is something that's probably going to last a while because it's not being used on a regular basis, so it does...
No, it's going to be... It's going to be used on a regular basis. Don't be mistaken.
Yes.
Well...
We will, even for smaller sections where we're doing, you know, relatively large potholes, this will make it more efficient and effective. Probably should have been purchased a long time ago. I, you know, but we've had tight budgets and we've had other equipment that's priority. And this one got approved in the budget. So, because it will save us a great deal of time and wear and tear on our personnel and allow us to take on some slightly larger projects that don't get to the point where they go on the resurfacing, big resurfacing contract, but still make a huge difference if there's a really bad section of road that we can take care of.
Okay. I understand. Would you look at... Let me just propose, you know, if you need the piece of equipment, that's one thing. Just look at a lease versus an option to buy. It might be of better value to the city in the long run. You might be able to do a lot more with the resource, financial resources that we're limited with.
Well, and we'll...
I know they run a pretty tight budget, I'm just saying.
And we can certainly look, you know, but again, you know, we tend to keep equipment 20, 30 years. And for $38,000, I mean, we could...
Well, maybe a lease to purchase, but I'm just, I'm just saying.
We'll take, we'll take a look, but...
Counselor Barnes?
Just point of clarification, being that you did mention Grant Road.
Yeah, that's it.
We did not even know when, a section of it, when it was even paved. There's no record. Now, put this in context for me, for my constituents, on those three sections of Grant Road. What is this piece of equipment going to do as far as alleviating that problem? What, how is it used?
Well, it won't be able... It'll be used in a way to do better what they did out there, to do some patchwork, to make it passable until we can get to that number that we need to go in and resurface that road.
So, no, it's a more easily facilitate?
Yes.
The patching?
Yeah. When I saw our people out there, you were there, they were, they were doing digging by hand.
Yes.
And I saw that. So, okay, you answered my question. As long as this piece of equipment will, not only for my district, but for the other areas. You know, in the ledger inquired, there was a thing about a humongous pothole on Avalon. And so, one of the biggest complaints, and I think I'm speaking for the other members of council also, is the fact that these potholes, they tear your vehicles up.
Yeah.
And we need to, and I'm glad to see that we're moving in this direction.
Yeah.
Because for a lot of the citizens, it's a huge problem.
Yes.
So, okay.
And this is paving fund.
But I get your point also. Go ahead. Point made.
Well, and you know from our record, from leasing garbage trucks and other high-dollar equipment, we are not shy about leasing. And so, this was just a small, comparatively speaking...
I move approval.
A small dollar figure piece of equipment that...
That's one of your official acts.
Yeah.
That will be utilized and allow us to do a lot more with less effort.
All right. So, I think we've had a move approval.
I've got a motion and a second.
And a second, all right. And so, I think we've concluded discussion. You can vote electronically. And it does pass.
And so, Madam Mayor, next I've got a hydraulic excavator from Yancey Brothers, and it's $235,047 to be used on a daily basis by the street division and other divisions.
Got a motion and a second for approval. There appears to be no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And then I've got a change order number four. It's $9,191 for Recorder's Court modifications.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for approval. And there appears to be no discuss... Wait, we do have discussion. We have, hold on a second. Mayor Protim.
Yeah, someone brought this in. It's both change order?
It's a change order has to do with communication systems that actually, the vendor, it was assumed that IT was going to handle this as part of what they do. And IT assumed that the vendor was going to handle it because they don't do that internally. And so, it was just a miscommunication. And so, we had to do a change order to allow the vendor to do it because we don't do that internally. And so, it's $9,191.
How close are they to finishing up the whole school?
How close are they to finishing? Yeah, they are very close. I mean, they were saying almost done, but it's very close.
We shouldn't expect any more change order.
No.
Okay. All right. And with that, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Got a repair of a caterpillar, 725 haul truck.
Got a motion and second for approval. Don't see, doesn't appear to be any discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And it, and it passes.
Okay. On my updates, Madam Mayor, we've already handled historic Westfield. And so, I want to go to Save a Pet program. And then we'll have a government center update and standing by trail update following that. And then a, an add-on with South Cummins update.
Hold on a second. We have Counselor Garrett would like to say a few words.
Mr. City Manager, as part of the Save a Pet program, if Director Beigler could also address, the Animal Control Advisory Committee, as I understand, hadn't met, or maybe they have since I talked to them, because that was a month or two ago.
Sure.
But I mean, I'm very concerned about that because that was one of the things I was pushing for, that I wanted to get the public's input who was on that committee and how we could approve everything. And I understand they keep saying seats have to be sworn in and that kind of thing, but I want to make sure we do get them meeting on a regular basis.
Yeah, I want to hear about that too, because we have no seats outstanding. We haven't sworn in that I know of.
So, there were some questions, actually from council, about the makeup of the committee. And that had been turned over to the clerk of council's office to resolve that we had the appropriate membership. We actually just yesterday got an email saying that that has now been sorted out and we'll be scheduling a meeting very shortly. I always forget to click, so I'm going to have her do that. I'll keep this very short, but I think it's a good thing for us to move forward and at least give you an update on what's happening. The Save a Pet program has nine parts to it. It was put in place in 2010. And we've slowly but surely been working on each one of these in one way or another to improve the performance, lower the euthanasia rates, and increase the live release rates. Go ahead. I think you all have heard this history over and over again, but in 2010, we were euthanizing 79% of the animals that went through the shelter. In 2017, we were down to 17% of the animals, which is a very significant improvement. If we have a good active Save a Pet program, we also, with all the spay neuters, et cetera, slowly reduce our intake. And as you can see, from 2010, we had, we intook 7,672 animals. And in 2017, we took in only 43, 4,348 animals. So, we've seen a very, really nice downward trend in the, in the number of animals we take in. If you look at raw euthanasia numbers, sometimes the percentages are very telling and sometimes just looking at raw numbers are very telling. In 2010, we euthanized 6,185 animals. In 2017, we only euthanized 735 animals total, for all the various reasons that we have to do that. Now, we often get criticized for our numbers and usually, they haven't done their homework. What I want to make sure you all are aware of is we put statistics out on the website every single month. We want to make sure that it's clear what we're doing, what the reasons are, and what the numbers look like. We need that clarity. The next one. This is one of the reports. And as you can see, we list what we take in, dogs, cats. Community cat program is now not part of our program. And then what RTO is return to owner, adopted, rescued, and, you know, placed in various. And GT is grand total. And then we list those that are humanely euthanized. And that's separated by dogs and cats, but you can see those percentages. These are the numbers for last year. We have charts all the way back to 2010 containing these same statistics, so that if you go online, you can go literally from 2010 through and see how we were able to perform. The, we also include since 2012, a euthanasia report that lists the reasons why the animals needed to be, need to be euthanized. And some of them are sick or contagious. If they have parvo, if they have kennel cough that's spreading, that may need to happen. We get animals in that need to be euthanized from out of county. We charge those out-of-county folks if they bring them in because they don't have the capability at the time to take care of that humane euthanization. We do euthanize for aggression if they're too aggressive. But again, those numbers are not terribly high. Vet recommended. We have a vet that has been contracted. We're attempting to hire a veterinarian manager. Have not yet been fully successful in that. We have some euthanization for capacity. And if you look, there are a couple of months there where we did not, if you look at the bottom line, we did not have to euthanize any animals for capacity. And that is our target line. There's little we can do if they're sick or contagious. But when we have, simply don't have the room, then we want to make sure that we find ways and we increase and maximize the number of animals we find homes for instead of having to euthanize for capacity. There is some controversy about what numbers should be included and which are not. We're part of a community that looks at no-kill numbers and reports nationally. We don't individually, but the city does. And the, we've been requested on more than one occasion to take out the out-of-county and the owner-requested euthanasies. For transparency, though, don't want anybody saying we're hiding numbers, we keep reporting all intakes. But if you take a look at what our numbers look like, if we take out those two categories, out-of-county and owner-requested euthanasia, you can see in the yellow down below that our euthanasia rates are falling well under 10%. With the out-of-county and the owner-requested, they are significantly higher. And we will continue to report that way so that there is total clarity when it comes to euthanasia. We don't want anybody claiming we're playing games with the numbers. Now, are there any questions?
All right. Let's see here. We have Counselor Barnes.
Head, initially, when this was scheduled for the agenda, it was to speak about no-kill.
Yes.
Now, the no-kill ideology, I have a problem with. Because there are specific things that are contrary, that are constraints and restrictions on the citizens. I'm going to pass this out to some of the councilors so they're knowing. And we really need to be careful in this regard. And I'm just going to read some of the... I'm very familiar with this no-kill ideology. To begin with, some are just some, in the interest of brevity here. Their standards are an end to the policy of accepting trapped, free-living animals to be destroyed as unadoptable in implementation of re-release programs. The next one, the next three, I have a problem with. Abolishment of trapping, lending traps to the public to capture animals, and support of trapping by shelters, governments, and pest control companies for the purposes of removing animals to be killed. I don't like the restriction on citizens if they request a trap. Here's a question. If a citizen calls and they have an animal that they want trapped, what's the procedure?
They call. If we can, if the animal is loose and we can attempt to capture the animal ourself, we will do that. If we are not successful and they can disappear in a hurry after someone calls, we can also loan the traps to individuals. We ask for a deposit because we kept having traps not returned, but that deposit is simply held until they bring the trap back. So, we can do it or they can do it.
You passed these out. I'm sorry.
Either we can do it or they can do it. That is the procedure. We've just got to call 311 or directly to Animal Control.
And this ideology is very subtle. I want this council to realize this here. Because what happens, they incrementally inch their way with this ideology. And so, this is an end to owner-requested killing of animals. That will not happen. That will not happen.
Owner-requested is only if there are pets. They can, they can request, bring their animal in and request euthanasia. But it is only if it's their pet and they bring it in for that because of age or sickness.
Okay. That I can agree with.
If, if there is an animal that is astray and we take it in, we follow all of the rules that we are obliged to follow. If we catch it, the animal's held for five days. Citizens are allowed to come in and say they'd like to adopt, and those animals are shown on the website, all that.
I'm all for that. What I have a problem with, because I'm very familiar with this no-kill ideology now, is abolishment of trapping, lending traps to the public to capture animals, and support of trapping by shelters. This is abolishment of trapping by shelters, governments, and pest control companies. I have a, I have a problem with that.
And, and we will not abolish that.
And the repeal of... I beg your pardon?
We will not abolish those.
Okay. So, I don't want this, I don't want that no-kill part of that, no-kill philosophy. Okay. My next question. What is the Animal Control's mission?
Is to protect public safety and health.
Pardon?
Is to protect public safety and health and secondarily to provide for our animals.
Your last state, your last statement on what the mission was, quote from you, is our mission is not to be a shelter. Our primary mission is animal control, which is to protect the public, which means that we are out on the street bringing in those animals that make you uncomfortable, that are running loose in your neighborhood.
Exactly.
Is that still the mission of Animal Control?
That's still the mission, yes.
As long as that stays the mission of Animal Control, then I'm happy. But I, I know this no-kill ideology is very subtle, where they incrementally inch their way so that no animals killed. And to me, that's a problem.
It is a problem. And it's not one we'll be able to understate law. It's not one we would be able to follow completely. We will continue to protect the animals and find homes if we can.
And just to let our viewing audience know, this no-kill philosophy in some of the states has lent to animals. I'm talking about possums and raccoons and all where the public can't call for, for traps. And to me, I mean, I love animals. I'm a grandfather. All my grandchildren love animals. But not at the expense when it becomes cumbersome to the public. And so, I would like for this council to just be aware, I have the standards here with, of this no-kill philosophy. So, you'll see what their standards are. It's not for me, it's their standards. And it's also something that I know you, Mayor...
Sure.
Came out again. Came out against.
We didn't adopt it.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't adopt it, right.
Just wanted to point a clarification.
And that was very controversial at the time, as you may remember.
Very controversial, that's exactly right.
Part of the issue also that exists is if we say we're no-kill, and we do not, by the way, the public comes, brings in animals believing that we will not euthanize any animals, if they want to get rid of them. And in fact, when they come in, we encourage them, we let them know that they could potentially be euthanized for capacity, and we let them know that they, we try to get them to take, use other alternatives rather than leaving the animal with us. So we don't want to give that false impression to the public either. It just, it gets very, people very, very upset.
My only concern, because I'm familiar, I did not want any constraints placed on the public by this council, because they don't know the standards of this no-kill philosophy. And so I just wanted to make it clear that my goal is to be in opposition and to inform this council that it is not anything that is beneficial to the citizenry of Columbus, Georgia. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, we have Counselor House.
Just a, a fast question, Director Bigler. If, if a dog is brought in, if you trap it or somebody else traps it and brings it in, then you keep it for, and try to, try to have it adopted out, but you, you don't turn it loose back into the green?
No, we do not let, turn it loose. We keep it, if it's astray, for five days. This allows the owner to...
Find it?
Find it, or, you know, come to us and locate it. And one of the reasons we're very active in making sure photos of all the animals that are in the shelter are out on the public website, and so that people who've lost their animals can check and see. They can also call. So yes, we keep it for five days. If we've got capacity, it will, will, very often, either someone will put their name on that and want to adopt it as soon as the five days is up, or one of the rescues will come and take the animal. And a lot, a large portion of our, and if you can look at the statistics, but a large portion of our animals are taken by rescues, and then they're placed through those rescues. If we can't find a home and we run into problems with capacity, and we have to meet state requirements for sanitation and what have you, then, then and only then will we euthanize. But before we euthanize, we have a whole protocol notifying every single rescue that we work with that we don't want to euthanize, can someone please come take the animal, and we work all the angles we can work before we drop back to that euthanize for capacity.
Okay, what happens when a stray cat comes in?
They are generally taken to paws, who now have a program, and they will return them to a community, if it's a bona fide community. Otherwise, they will place them, and if it's, if it's feral. If it's not feral, we'll put, we'll keep it and put it up for adoption.
Okay, but if it's feral, then paws or someone neuters it and turns it back?
Yes.
Out to where it came from?
Cuts the ear and puts it back into a community. A cat community.
Do you know what they do to ensure that the cat's free of disease or something before they put it back out?
Oh, yes, that, the, the, the procedure for the spay neuter and clipping the ear includes five-year vaccinations and includes, I'm sorry, I just do a, drew a complete blank on, on the end of that sentence.
A veterinary check to ensure the animal's healthy.
And their, their veterinarian checks them out, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I've got a comment.
All right.
Because you know how bull cry in a concerned community?
Because this program is not going by CDC, the National Veterinary Association Guidelines, and the State of Georgia Veterinary Guidelines for immunizing those cats with a booster once they are initially, so they are not completely immunized against rabies. That was Counselor House's point. And that's been my concern all along. I've been labeled a, a cat hater. I'm not a cat hater. I'm a nurse, I'm an RN, I believe in health. And when the CDC, one, who doesn't listen to the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, when the Georgia Veterinary Association says that each cat has to be, get an initial inoculation and a booster at the end of the year to be fully immunized against rabies, and when their National Veterinary Association, who I've contacted, said, yes, Counselor Barnes, you are right, according to the CDC, the cat is, the cats are not under the DNR, completely immunized against rabies. And my concern is that these cats that are feeding at these common sites are also feeding along with the raccoons and possums or whatever. We've had a couple of cases of cat rabies in Columbus that I know of. And so that's my concern. My concern, yes it is, it's documented with the Health Department. My concern is that a child might get nipped by a cat out there, not reported to a parent, and as we all know, rabies is fatal. And so that's my only concern about this, is that I wish this program was abiding by the guidelines of the Centers for Disease Control, the guidelines of the National Veterinary Association, as far as immunizing these cats against rabies. That's my only buy-in. It would be horrendous if something like that happened. And so I go on record again as saying that that's my concern. There are concerns in Sacramento, California, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and things like this here. And I've traveled to, to organizations just to, just to get statistics, only because I want the citizens of Columbus to be healthy. And when we're doing something, when we're allowing something to go against the guidelines of the Centers for Disease Control, it's a problem. And so that's, that's my take on this here.
Okay. All right, we've got Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of concerns, and I know this is just a presentation update, so we appreciate that. Mr. City Manager, could, could we also put on the list, I don't think we have on our legislative agenda, we did it last year, and I think it's going to be, be a, I think it's going to come back up for debate at the state level with our legislature, and that's the, the matter of puppy milling. So maybe that's something, I think that we took a stance on that last year. I think that, you know, everybody here is an adoption advocate, making sure that these animals are given homes, but the, the constant breeding and breeding and unfettered and unmanaged breeding of these animals is continuing, it's just extending this problem that we're discussing today somewhat. So could we make sure that we show our support on that, or at least send a letter that, I know that's going to be talked about again, I believe, at the state level, that, I don't think they did anything last year. But, you know, just to let our legislative body know our position on it. Can we do, can we do that with the city attorney?
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
I can get with the city attorney, and we can send them something, or...
And I've had that on my to-do list for a while, I just haven't had a chance to bring it up. This is a good opportunity to do it. The other thing in this, I know that, in talking about these initiatives, the bottom line is in order to have success, you're going to have to have balance. There's got to be balance. There's a lot of, you know, positive initiatives that are, that are happening, but again, there has to be, there has to be balance. There also has to be supervision, there has to be, there, there has to be collaborative efforts, there has to be responsibility, there has to be responsible management. And that's the key thing, is responsible management. We've got a lot of irresponsible management out in the community. And when that starts happening, it becomes an issue for neighborhoods, and if it's an issue for neighborhoods, then we have to address it. There's got, I go back to that, there's got to be balance. So, help me out with this, I had a constituent call the other day, and how are we addressing the matter? If somebody complains where there's an excessive amount of, of, let's just say, animals in an area that's causing a problem, a neighborhood concern, how are we addressing that with the citizens? Is Animal Control coming out and, and actually working with the citizens to resolve these matters?
If we can, yes, and within the law.
What does, what does that mean, within the law?
If, if there is, are we talking cruelty to animals, or just too many animals? If there are too many animals, the limit is five, and Animal Control will go out. And if they cite them, and then they can go to court, if we can observe it.
I'll pick a group, feral cats, okay? I know we call them community cats, but we changed the name from feral cats to community cats. Sounds better.
No, they're, they're two different things. They're just plain feral cats, and we do put those down. Community cats have a, have a person who presides over them and is responsible for them. So they're two different types of cats. Community cats is, is Counselor House had said, they've been neutered, they've been given their shots and checked for disease. Feral cats are just no idea where this cat came from, don't know his background, don't know who he belongs to, so two different kinds of cats.
Well, and I think that the terms are debatable, but anyway, I don't, I don't want to get into that. But if you got an issue where there, nobody owns them, and they're running wilds, and it's calling, causing a neighborhood issue, how are we addressing that with citizens?
We will go trap the cats if they are running loose and no one has responsibility for them.
And we put, and we put, we trap them and we, and we put them down.
We trap them, and we put them down. We do put down feral cats unless there's a community that they can be sent to.
Well, I know, I know that there's been some changes, I think, that I'm benounced to a lot of members on the council, some, some movement in some of these programs, I guess, for whatever, lack of funding, whatever, but are we, let me just tell you, when this citizen called me, they called Animal Control. And the concern was that Animal Control told them that they don't use cages anymore, and they don't take cages out, and they'll come and drop a cage out if you, if you want to, or you can come and pick it up, but we don't, we don't do that anymore.
We do. So there was a misunderstanding, misunderstanding somewhere, and I'll have to, we'll have to talk to staff.
Well, and this individual was very concerned, matter of fact, he was in my ear for, you know, for 30 minutes on the subject, and was very upset, I mean, very upset, but I hope we're not doing that, because my concern is with some of these programs, citizens are not trained to deal with these animals.
I agree. If, and if we go out and, in general, if they call, we'll go out, we'll set the trap. We will ask them to watch the trap, because we don't want pets to get caught, and we don't want them to stay in there for too long.
Okay.
But we do set traps.
That's what I wanted to, to discuss today, is to making sure that's not actually happening, because this citizen told me they called, and they were told that the city does not do that anymore.
If you would.
If they want a trap, they can come get it, put it out themselves, and then call when you catch the animal.
Send me the address and let me check what's been going on there.
I'll be glad to do that, but...
Please.
Anyway, I just want to reinforce that we cannot let our citizens be out there trying to deal with it. They're not trained, people are just not trained to deal with these animals, and you're going to have conflict.
You're right.
People are going to get hurt. That's why we have Animal Control. So I hope that that's the way we're, we're dealing with that, and that somewhat solves some of the irresponsible management that's out there.
Yes.
And I'm a, you know, I'm an advocate of, of working and, and trying to help some of these problems we have around animal welfare and cats, dogs, and all, but when the irresponsible management comes in, that's what creates a lot of the friction within the community, and that just needs to be the, a focus of the people who are involved on the other end.
Gotcha.
And making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. That'd be a great topic of discussion, I think, for the Animal Control Board, is making sure some of these people are doing that, because I'm not so sure they are. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a correction.
Okay. All right, we've got a lot of other counselors here. Hold on a second. All right, Counselor Barnes has a correction.
A rapid raccoon. And I think it's been two cases. And my concern, like I said, that these cats, these feral cats are eating at the same eating places. And so my only buy-in is I wish that this government would abide by the Centers of Disease Control and the National Veterinary Association, because I know it's a way that you can, if you have these, if you, if you have these colonies, that you, that there is a way that you can ensure that they get a booster shot. There has to be a mechanism, because if not, you're one-tending, placing animals out into the community that are not sufficiently immunized against a very dangerous disease. That's it. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay. Counselor, excuse me, we have Clifton Fay, city attorney.
I just wondered, Mr. City Manager, was there a resolution on the legislative agenda last year about the puppy mill issue? I was just trying...
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can...
So we'll have to do one, that's why I've...
Figure out what to send them.
And, and we, well, we can bring it, the resolution back at the January 8th meeting.
That's fine.
Okay, we have Counselor House.
Just a fast request for clarification. I understand philosophically the difference in a feral cat and a community cat. How do you tell the difference? If I'm a citizen and I see a cat wandering in my yard, and I decide to call you, or I trap it with a trap that I have, how, how do you then know it's feral versus community?
The, the community cats have a clip ear.
Well, how about if it had a clip ear?
Then it is a feral cat, and you should...
Then it's a feral cat.
And then it's a feral cat, and you should definitely advise us so that we can either have the community cat people try to attempt to trap it, or we'll come and attempt to trap it.
Okay, do you have certain locations that you know are community cats?
There are some areas, we don't handle the program. Paul's actually handles the program, and we work with them, but if, if there's no place to put it, it will come to us and we will euthanize.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, and we have Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up on a comment where you, you said earlier that you'd come out and trap them and pick them up, and I had a constituent that had an experience on Cooper Creek Road, and I think you and I talked about this, but he called and was told the same thing, that we don't trap, you have to trap it. So he had to go provide his own trap. And the cat, wasn't his cat, it just showed up, and it was under his house, and, you know, making noises and bothering him.
Absolutely.
So, so he, he got a cage and trapped it, and then he called back, and your folks came out and picked it up. And a day or two later, it showed back up. So there, there's a disconnect somewhere.
Obviously. Well, we've got some new staff, and then it's obvious that we need to have conversations within, and to make sure that we eliminate any conflict.
Well, I know you do a good job training, and I hope that you follow up on this.
We will follow up.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you. I think that's it, Pat. Thanks. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next I've got Government Center update, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll just give you a quick update where we're at with the restoration of the Government Center. We're still focusing on the 10th and the 11th floor, so that we can get those courtrooms back up and running for the Superior Court Judges. The drywall for 10 and 11 has been completed, as well as the installation of the floor in the courtroom on the 11th floor. We started to do the paint on the 11th floor, that's been completed, the first coat, and removed the ceiling tile on the 11th floor, so that they can begin the installation of the mechanical controllers on the 11th floor. So we're definitely moving forward. What they're working on currently is finishing up the drywall on the 10th floor, and we've also moved to the 9th floor. So they're, as they're completing, they're continuing to move down to the low, excuse me, to the lower floors. Upcoming work for next week will be the electrical work on the 11th floor and the final painting on the 11th floor. So we're really making a lot of progress on the top two floors to hopefully get them back in and operational very soon. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We've got Counselor Allen.
Oh, no thanks.
Oh, okay. I think that's it, Pam. Thank you. Thank you for your regular updates.
And the judges continue to get weekly email updates, and, and as they have meetings, we're sending Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge and Lisa Goodwin to those meetings to make sure that questions get answered and they get all the information they need. Thank you. So we've got, next, Standing Boy Trail update, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge is here with Blake Melton, who's chairman of the Standing Boy Trail Committee, and they're going to tell us what we've got going on there.
Sure. And there's been a committee that's been meeting quite for some time, made up of community leaders, working with DNR to develop a trail system at Standing Boy State Park. It's included Midtown, Uptown, the biking community, private citizens, and many others have been working diligently with DNR on this plan. Today, Blake...
Today Blake Melton is here, representing the committee, to just give you an update on their efforts in this project.
This is going on on state property, on DNR property, but I think this is, so this will just be sort of an informational, what's going on in the community. I've got a few slides, mainly just because pictures are very helpful, but please interrupt me and ask questions. I'd love to entertain whatever questions you have. So I'm sure all of you are familiar with where the property is. This is a map, just to refresh everyone's memory, the southern border of the property is Green Island, the back of Green Island Neighborhood. Sort of the eastern is Standing Boy Creek, which you can kind of think of it as River Road. Northern boundary is Old River Road, and western boundary is the river. It's about 1,600 acres, lots of topography for our area of the state, a very sort of mountainous feeling. I mean, we've talked a lot about benefits of trails, and how a multi-use trail can be helpful, and the ones I want to focus on, in, are the last two, the attract and retain businesses. Now, the Chamber of Commerce has supported this, and a lot of our local companies are, as a way to sort of further increase our ability to attract businesses, attract talented employees. And then also, this, this complements Whitewater, ZipLine, that sort of outdoor tourism attraction. You know, Pam went through a lot of the supporters, it's been widely supported. We've worked really hard to talk with various constituencies and different user groups, to make sure that everyone's sort of on the same page, addressing our concerns, and moving forward in a unified manner. So other cities, we've got Auburn has a Chihuahua State Park, they've built trails over there that have been very successful, and draw lots of ridership from Columbus. Then the Forks Area Trail System, or FATTS in Augusta, Oak Mountain, and Birmingham. Now, there is precedent for southeastern cities to have very successful, well-known, multi-use mountain bike hiking, running trails that attract sort of regional, if not national, attention. They don't require snow cap peaks and rocky mountains to have a good trail system. Lots of folks mountain bike, but these two pictures are what I'd rather focus on. The older I get, the more I like the guy on the left, in the left-hand picture. It gives me confidence that maybe I have a few decades of good riding left, but you can see between he, and then I've got little girls as well, so on the little girl on the right, I mean, there's a broad swath of people that can do this. It's not sort of the Red Bull Rampage type stuff you might see on TV. Anybody that's a hiker, a runner, you know, just an outdoor enthusiast can mountain bike. It's very much sort of more cross-country running than sort of X-game, extreme sport. There, there's a Take-A-Kid Mountain Biking Day, and some of this does go on in Columbus. Going back to Whitewater, this should dovetail with Whitewater, Nantahala, Acoe, and the National Whitewater Center all have robust mountain bike trail networks that are really sort of part of what they offer. On the left is the Acoe, and you actually park at the same place with the kayakers and the rafters, and ride across, and then all the trails are right there. The Acoe's, trail's a little bit further apart, but if you go into the Acoe Outdoor Center, I mean, they're going to be guiding raffs, but they're also going to be renting you mountain bikes and doing mountain bike guided tours, and there's no reason that can't happen here in conjunction with Whitewater and the ZipLine. What's, what's gone on with Standing Boy? We have a steering committee that's got a broad cross-section of people in the community that are sort of talking with DNR and trying to guide this along. We have a land use agreement between DNR and CVA Sorba, and this kind of gets into a little bit of the acronym soup, but I'll, I'll try to straighten that out in just a minute. But CVA Sorba is our local mountain biking advocacy group. So we have a land use agreement with them, which is their sort of version of an MOU. So that's been completed, we have the, the right to, to build trails out there. Then CVA Sorba and the Columbus Road Runners and the Pine Mountain Trail Association have all, we've executed a joint MOU to just kind of say, we're going to work together on this, and we're all going to remember that the general point's to be outside, and there're going to be some user conflicts, but we're going to work through those, that sort of a thing. You know, CVA Sorba is a 501(c)(3), and these other organizations are too, but they're organizations set up to handle $5,000 or $10,000, that kind of thing. So to raise money for this, we're utilizing the community foundation. We've got a special project fund there. So the money for construction will go through that, because it's going to be a significant amount, and I'll get to that in a minute. Trail Solutions, the International Mountain Biking Association, has a design arm, and that's Trail Solutions. We have a contract with them, they were here two weeks ago, and spent about four or five days on the property. They're looking at soil type, and rock, and on the property, they're, they're using clinometers to measure side slopes, it's sort of a very scientific process, to make sure that we don't have erosion, that the trails don't require lots of maintenance, and that they're safe for everyone to use. Once they're built, it will be volunteer maintenance, much like that that goes on at Flat Rock right now, or that goes on up at the Pine Mountain Trail Association. So that's sort of the, the overview of the, the management plan. Sorba is the Southern Off-Road Bicycle, Bicycle Association, it's sort of a subsidiary of MBA, which is the International Mountain Bike Association. The important thing there is that MBA has over 40,000 members, 400 chapters, they're a sophisticated organization. I mean, you can see why we want them involved, so we do not have things like this. There's some, often questions about, you know, why do we need professional construction? Don't we, we already have some trails out there? And it's kind of like, yeah, we already had a river, but we didn't expect people to come kayak it until we did certain things to it. And mountain bike trails are no different. They need to have certain characteristics, and they need to be well-designed in order to be effective. So we're going to avoid that. These are books that MBA's published on mountain bike trail building, just again, the sophistication in their experience building really all over the world, and they'll, they'll be here. CVA Sorba, our local group, we have about 90 members now, 90, 95 members, and we are working out at Flat Rock Park regularly, and that's the Trail at Flat Rock. There are limitations to Flat Rock just because of topography and size that Standing Boy doesn't have. And Standing Boy can really take this to a, a new level in terms of local citizens using it, and also attracting folks from out of town. Standing, I mean, Flat Rock is, just doesn't have the ability to do that. What is going to be built at Standing Boy will be a parking lot, a gravel parking lot, and DNR has pledged $100,000 to construct the parking lot. There'll be a kiosk with a map and some information, there'll be some very basic sort of toilet facilities, and then there'll be, we want to emphasize a beginner trail to help people get into the sport, and then there'll be 25 miles of trail, is what will be constructed. Some of that will be foot traffic only, and we'll, you know, we'll work through user issues to making sure everybody has a good experience, whether they're hiking, running, or biking. Here's some pictures just of what trail looks like. This would be sort of more beginner trail, you can see very smooth surface, not lots of elevation change. This would be more intermediate. What's on the left is intermediate largely because of the tightness of that turn, and it's steep, and then you can see on the right, you're getting a little bit rockier. And then this is what advanced trail's going to look like, again, just steeper and rockier. But when you have an idea of what'll be out there, and what people will be riding, it'll be a wide variety of those sorts of things. And they were very pleased with what they found on the property in terms of steepness of slope and rock. They feel like we're going to be able to have a good combination of green beginner trail, as well as black diamond advanced trail, that'll sort of attract, you know, and satisfy lots of different sorts of people. We've talked a little bit about the management plan. I think probably what concerns y'all maybe the most is, is the traffic, and the parking area, and that sort of thing. What, what we have pushed for with DNR is we've said, look, we want a parking area that's close to Old River Road, because we don't want people to feel like they can get back off in the woods, and they're not being watched, or, you know, the feeling of, you know, we don't, we don't want to encourage bad things in the parking lot. We want to not increase the amount of vehicular traffic that goes back onto that property. The gates open right now a lot for hunting, but our preference is, we feel like the more vehicles you get in there, the more possibility and probability you have of people in there doing things they shouldn't be doing. And so that's kind of, the, the parking area is designed to be very minimal and sort of self-policing. There is a state park employee that is, lives on that property, not to work there, they're at Florence Marina, but they are sort of eyes and ears on that property by the gate. And one of the things our steering committee is doing in conjunction with some of our local representatives, is to sort of go back with DNR and, and work with them to make sure we have sufficient parking. I think that's one of the things that worries me the most, is that as we get going, it's very popular, and we don't have parking, and we get people parked up and down the side of Old River Road, and I get phone calls, and y'all get phone calls, and DNR gets phone calls, and so we're going to try to, you know, we're, we're very attuned to that. We have a number of neighbors on the steering committee, and we'll be trying to prevent that. I think that's about. You know, where we are right now, we've got the agreements I talked about executed, and the wetland survey is done. The master plan, final master plan will be completed in January, and then the, the Trail Solutions folks will come back and actually flag all 25 miles of trail corridor February, early March. And then they will do the archaeological and the non-game endangered species. We have to wait until April to do the endangered species, the non-game, because there's trillium. So we have to wait on the trillium to bloom, which is a small sort of flowering plant. We like to build some amount of trail in May. It's more expensive to build trail down here in the summer, because if the soil gets hard, and if we build here in the winter, you can't build trail in Colorado, and Utah, and Washington, Texas, it's snowing. So you get this oversupply of trail builders, which drives down the cost. So the plan's to build some trail in May, and then a majority of this, fall 2019, early 2020. The cost is 1.5 million. We'll get a little bit more firm number with that master plan. This is from about a week ago, we've gotten another $100,000 pledge, so we're now at like 723,000. So we're very close to halfway. I mean, that's, a lot of that was raised even before we had the agreement with DNR. So once we get the master plan in January, we'll make a big fundraising push, and hopefully get, get north of a million, and then be, being, raising funds much more publicly. Up until now, before we had the agreement with DNR, it's been very much me going to folks and asking, but we will, we'll have a much more public campaign after the first of the year. Again, this is all private money and a little bit of state money on state property. So how it concerns y'all is, obviously, it's a large thing going on in the community, but, you know, longer term, we need, you know, there's opportunity to build more trail, especially, you know, from sort of here to Auburn, to West Point, up to La Grange, and kind of Manchester. That, that circle has a lot of terrain to build trail in it. Bentonville, Arkansas's got very similar terrain, and they've, it's Walmart, and Walmart's been behind trails there as a way to recruit workers and retain workers and keep that company there, and it's been hugely successful. And it's, it's a model for us to go, if we, you know, looking far into the future of, we get Standing Boy, and this is great, but we also need to, to think it is a regional attraction, that this can be important. And then the in-town trails, we're, this is in the very early stages, but there's some discussions about doing what they've done in Bentonville, which is sort of a bike playground, which is something, a very small trail, sort of some loops, maybe a football field in size or less, but just geared toward kids. And I'll give you the, the sales pitch for that, at least my, my elevator pitch, is I live on Madden, and so I'm into biking, so my kids are four and six, and they have bikes, and they get out on the street. The other neighborhoods come out, kids come out, and they ride up and down the sort of 100-yard strip of asphalt, and then after about 10 minutes, they get bored. And I'll put my kids in the, you know, we'll go down to the Riverwalk, we'll go out to Flat Rock, but the other kids aren't doing that. And I would love to see things, whether it's Midtown or Uptown aligned with a dragonfly, that have those sort of pocket park, small trail systems, that are encouraging kids to stay outdoors and to stay on their bikes. And then that would not only be something beneficial in and of itself, but also be sort of a stepping stone to them, them getting out in the woods at Flat Rock and Standing Boy and, and other places. So that's, hopefully, how this, this sort of state project then fits into Columbus and the region long-term. And I, I'd love to answer any questions. Oh, well, let me, actually, let me run through these pictures real quick. This is what some of the Skills Kids Park would look like. To click through those, that looks kind of silly, but my kids will ride it, and ride it, and ride it, and love it. And that's, that, some of those pictures are what we would look to do in town, to sort of get kids engaged, and then as a stepping stone to other trails. Now, this is, these are gratuitous pictures of my kids. The left is Flat Rock, and there's a mile-long beginner trail out there. And, and my kids love it, and we just, and then the right is what we do on our street, is I got these cones and put them out there, and all the neighborhood kids weave in and out of them, and they all love it. And what my little, my six-year-old asked for for Christmas was she wanted to get her friends' bike lessons, because a lot of her friends can't even ride a bike. So I mean, a lot of this is geared towards, you know, I mean, not only community and adults, but to sort of really getting those kids engaged and out in the woods, and away from their devices. So any questions, thoughts, concerns?
I'm glad that you had that senior citizen up there.
Yes.
Now, could you go back to those different, the beginner trail, and the intermediate, and? Yes. So in other words, I can get on out there at my age and start on the beginner trail, and with work, and fun, and doing it, work my way up to the most difficult one, depending on my athletic ability and how quickly I learn.
Yes. And what they'll do is they'll build it sort of in a stacked loop, so rather than it being like one 25-mile trail, there'll be a lot of intersections, and generally, depending on topography, the, the green trails will be closest to the parking lot, and the black diamond trails will be furthest. So it's very much used, you know, you're able to sort of create your own experience and ride at your own level, both in terms of difficulty and in terms of time.
And, and I was speaking tongue-in-cheek, I think this is awesome. As John can attest, in Europe, I'm so glad that, that something like this is happening, because in Europe, all over Europe, you have things like this here. You have people who are 80, and 90 years old, folks marching, an activity, and I know that Betsy Covington with the Community Foundation has been a big advocate, and I see the walking trails that we have here in Columbus, it's awesome. And to add something like this here, I think is just a cream on it. So I'm really glad to see something like this. And you also mentioned having, like in a football field, a little course that kids can get on, that children can get on, today. And I just think the concept and the eventual realization of something like this is just a blessing to the community. So this is awesome.
Thank you.
Encouraging me to get on my bike a little bit more, too.
Good.
All right. We have Counselor Davis.
Mr. Melton, thanks for coming and sharing with us today, and I just want to say, you've been a champion, and that's a champion you are, single-handedly, you know, taking this on. I know you've got a day job, but I don't know how you do it. This man right here works around the clock on this project, you know, and plus you saw he's got a family to raise, too, as well, but I know this has been something that he's been very passionate about, and you've been working on for several years now, and, and again, I say almost, pretty much, single-handedly, but it hasn't been an easy, an easy project to connect all the dots, but he has successfully, I think I can say successfully done that, and on his way to, to raising the funds to, to make it happen. I think it's going to be a great community project. It's economic development, I mean, you look over in Alabama, what they've done over there of some of the trails, and now we have this, it kind of, another way to put us on the map, another way to get more people to come into our community and, and utilize nature, and be in unison with nature, you know, one, one-on-one with that, because it's, it's little impact, but yet it, it provides a, a great activity for, for people of all ages. So I just wanted to thank you. I know I couldn't make the last meeting, the chamber had to reschedule on event, and we talked about that, but you've been doing an outstanding job. I hear nothing but great things, and thanks for keeping us in the loop on it, and we appreciate all your hard work and efforts on it.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
All right. I just second all that, that is, you've just done a tremendous job. Counselor Woodson. Counselor Woodson.
Well, I want to thank you for coming before us and briefing us, and the community will get an opportunity to learn about it. I wasn't sure what your program was until just now, and I, and I think it's outstanding, and you're right, as we're trying to change the face of this community, finding out what our "it" is that we've been trying for over twenty years. I think this is awesome, too, you know, compared with the other things. I think we need to do more communication out to the community so that they're aware of it, so if there are people interested in being a part of it, they can be. Like Counselor Barnes says, my grandkids been getting me on a bike, and I hadn't been on a bike in about ten, fifteen years, and I've been telling myself, "I need to go get me some bike gear, because I'm too old for this stuff." But that old man up in there encouraged me not to feel that way. But I would like to see if we can do some more publication, more marketing, so that the community can be aware of it, because I think it's a good thing. And now that Columbus is being seen as one of fifty retirement places, and people look for things to do, and the young people are coming back from college, I think the more marketing we do on these events that are going on throughout the city, the better it will be for us. So, thank you very much. I hope you'll bring another update later in the future.
Good, no, thank you. I met with Peter Bowden, I think, last week to see if they had room in their budget, because what I'd love to do is, you know, StandingBoyTrails.org, and some of those appear to not be taken, and so we've tried to look at getting information in the master plan, and it's like a donate link and just some basic things, so that you don't have to be somewhere to see the slideshow, and we've got a much more robust version of this, but to have that accessible sort of on the web where we can then use social media, so that's sort of in process into next year. So, if you see Peter, please echo that it's important that we do that.
And I would say that, too, because, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, push it again if you would.
Okay. I would, I would love to help you with it, because when you see a Standing Boy trail, and I thought, I was like, "What is that?" You know, people really don't know what it means. I don't know if it has something biking trails or something else added, where, why people are doing social media looking, pops up to biking trail, "Where, Standing Boy's trail, what's that, where is that?", and then they'll look more into it. So, just, just a suggestion, myself, like, I was like, "What's Standing Boy trail?", until I did a little further research, I said, "Oh, it's biking." So, just room for suggestion, but I will talk to Peter, too.
All right, thank you. I think that concludes discussion. Thank you so very much for all your efforts, it's very exciting.
Well, thank you, and if anybody has any additional questions, I shouldn't be hard to find, so please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, the final presentation I have is South Commons update, and I've got three speakers, but I've asked that they be brief so that we can move on. First is the Finance Director, Alexander, Angelica Alexander, and then Mary Sherman with Sports Council, and then Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge, Finance Director.
Yes, sir, good afternoon. So, I have only just one slide to show here. As you recall, Council approved a seven million dollar Columbus Building Authority lease revenue bond issuance back in October, and so here is just a brief timeline of that process. You know, we sent out those RFPs, the Building Authority approved it in late November. Right now, we're actually in the bond validation process, and I believe that it is scheduled to be heard on the eighteenth of December, and once that is complete, we expect to close on December twentieth. So, we'll have the cash in hand on December twentieth, and I just wanted to provide Council with that very brief update.
Thank you, and Mary Sherman with Sports Council.
Thank you. Mary. Thank you so much for having us today. To give you a brief update of where we are, we'll go through briefly the USA Softball International Cup. We have signed the agreement with them to bring the event here next July 2019. We'll talk a little bit about the team that's gonna be preparing South Commons, a little bit about the scope of the project and our schedule. So, USA Softball, you know, the International Cup, the release was announced just about a week ago, that they will be bringing the International Cup here next July of 2019. Right now, we have seven teams confirmed that will be here, we can have up to twelve to fourteen teams, excuse me. So, the international event will be televised on ESPN, we're excited to have them here, and then we'll also have the opportunity to have the actual team come back in 2020, sometime in the spring, before they go on to Japan to compete in the Olympics. The renovation plans currently for South Commons are five point six million that we've presented. We are looking to renovate the, and upgrade the stadium there, it's our centerpiece at South Commons, to renovate the restrooms, the painting of the facility, landscaping, the bullpens are very important to the International Cup as well as future events and existing events that we have, repairing those water leaks that are causing problems in our rooms downstairs, and also making the stadium ADA compliant, especially in our dugout area. So, we're also looking at renovating and upgrading the three fields, that's Field Six, Seven, and Eight, that's a three-field fan. The dugouts for Field Seven are being addressed, and that's where one of our ADA complacency issues is gonna come into effect with building a ramp system, our fencing for those fields, as well as the lighting, and some improvements to the actual playing surface of those three fields. We're also looking at enhanced technology, we're bringing fiber into the facility that will help us build the string games as well as help power ESPN when they come in to televise the games. So, currently, we're looking at the stadium and the stadium field, as well as modifications to Field Six and Eight through the sports playing surface, as well as the fencing and lighting. Our timeline for the project, you'll see, we started in the summer months with surveys, a topographic survey, some technology surveys, as well as others who were there at the facility. Our fundraising efforts started in July, and then we came to you guys, and you generously supported the project, and we're very excited to have you onboard to help us with it. We've been fundraising very heavily since, and we're off to a good start. In the last few weeks, we have raised seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are not finished, we're still meeting, we still have several foundations, as well as private donors and organizations who we've reached out to, and we're just waiting to hear back from them. So, we're still committed, we're fundraising. The project will begin in January after our final team is selected, and we'll be working with those contractors to go through line items, to stretch those dollars as far as we can to enhance the facility, to meet the needs of International Cup, our existing customers, and future customers. With just the announcement of International Cup, we've had three different softball groups call to try to bring events to Columbus, so the marketing piece is working for us, and we couldn't be more thrilled to be a part of this spectacular event.
Next, we'll have Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
So, I just wanted to give Mayor and Council just a brief update on where we are with the RFP process. The, we issued RFP, what we work with the Sports Council is to kind of split up the items of this five point six million dollar project, and to utilize the three million that's authorized in the bonds for a particular piece, which is the general contractor for the construction of the improvements at South Commons. The RFP was issued last Friday, we have a mandatory site visit meeting that's scheduled for December the seventeenth. Work must be completed no later than June twenty-seventh, so we are on a very tight timeline to get this work completed. The proposals are due back no later than noon on January fourth. So, our plan is to get approval from Council to negotiate that contract on January the eighth. It's really important that we keep this process moving forward in order to meet that June twenty-seventh deadline, so we will be asking Council for approval to negotiate the contract. We will also get commitment from the Sports Council for anything over and above the three million that Council has budgeted, that they have committed to the balance of that contract once we get that information and the bids come back in. So, again, a very tight timeline and a lot of coordination between Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Finance, and the Sports Council to make this happen.
Okay, Madam Mayor, if there are questions, we will answer those about the South Commons project, if not...
None at this time.
We, that concludes my agenda.
Okay, fantastic. All right, we'll move on to the Clerk's Agenda then, Ms. Glisten.
Madam Mayor and Council, on the Clerk's Agenda, Items One through Three are biographical sketches of nominees that were submitted by the Airport Commission. Item number four is a memorandum from me explaining the expiring terms, or, excuse me, terms that have already expired on the Animal Control Advisory Board. These terms were put on hold by Council a few months back, and we are now ready to address them. Items Five through Seven are resolutions excusing the absence of councilors, they can...
Got a motion in second for approval, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
We have a motion in second that the minutes be received from the Board of the Tax Assessors. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Item Nine are board appointments. The first item is for the Airport Commission. The Commission has submitted the names of Chris Badcock, James Barker, and Diane Preston, and Council will vote between them to fill the seat of Mr. Winfield Flanagan. Counselor Allen.
James Barker.
Counselor Baker.
Mr. Barker.
Barnes.
Barker.
Davis.
Barker.
Garrett.
Barker.
House.
Barker.
Huff.
Barker.
Thomas.
Barker.
Mayor Protim. Counselor Woodson.
Wow.
Thank you. Mr. Barker can be confirmed.
Got a motion in second for confirmation, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
I and B are designated district seats, we still need representatives for District Five and District Six on the Recreation Advisory Board. Item C are other open positions, we have two positions open on Circle, one open on Uptown Facade, and one open on the Personnel Review Board, and that completes my agenda, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have, let's see, Counselor Huff.
Yeah, I was just informing, Mr. Barker here? Could he, having come forward, just say hello to us if you don't mind?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Barker, if you'd like to come forward.
We look forward to working with you, so, since you're here.
Good morning, my name's James Barker, I'm sure of y'all have received a letter from me outlining who I am and what I'm about. Thank you for the nomination and confirmation, and I look forward to serving this community with my expertise in this area, and look forward to the challenge.
Thank you, just wanted everybody to see you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great day.
Appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you so much. All right, Counselor Woodson.
Yes, I don't know if it's to the City Manager or City Attorney, I wanted to know, have we requested an audit for Bull Creek? Because my understanding is John is gonna be leaving on the thirty-first, and every time somebody's been leaving, we've been doing audits, so I was wondering if we request it for Bull Creek?
We have not.
Yeah.
Could we do one?
Do one for the Golf Authority?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Because we've been doing them for everyone that has been leaving.
No, it's, it's our practice, that's what we do.
Mm-hmm, so I was wondering.
So, that's it, I will entertain that as a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
And John, I don't see him, he may be in the back, but Tiaja or someone taking notes, if you can just let, or Lindsay, whomever, let John know that that's been added, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our business agenda. We have had a request for an executive session on personnel and matters of litigation, I'll entertain a motion for executive session.
Motion for adjournment.
All right, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, please clear the chambers.
All right. Okay.
All right, we are, have just exited Executive Session on Matters of Personnel and Litigation, and we have, the City Attorney has something he'd like us to consider, sir.
Let's defer to Counselor Woodson, since we've got people here, and I think she wants to make a motion.
Yes, one second. Counselor Woodson.
Thank you. City Manager Isaiah Hughley, I would like to have a referral to the Director of Planning to address this issue at hand about the Health and Fitness Center, and give a, an issue, a business for a hundred and twenty days to operate while we resolve the issue of the rezoning.
Okay, so that's a referral from Counselor Woodson to the Director of Planning to look into the issue of whether there's a need to modify the UDO related to a potential exception for health and fitness facilities in the historic district.
A hundred and twenty days.
A tax change, and during such time as that's being considered, which we approximate to be about a hundred and twenty days, it's Council's wish that the business continue to operate during that time. So, that's a motion, a second, yes, sir, do you have something further?
I was just gonna say, we'll issue a conditional business license for that time period.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, motion second, there being no further discussion, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Nope.
All right, is that one, no? Yeah, okay, you got it, Lindsay? Okay, all right, thank you, hope that answers that, appreciate y'all's patience today.
No, she took you as a no. Lindsay, it's a yes, he was just playing.
She said, "Are there any opposition?", I said, "No."
Okay, all right, now we have the City Attorney, yes, sir.
All right, the last item of business, Mayor, is the resolution approving a forty-two-thousand five hundred dollar settlement for the claims of Joan Nguyen against the former sheriff and consolidated government.
Got a motion in second for approval, there being no discussion, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, and it does carry. Did I properly exit us from Executive Session?
You did.
Okay, all right, well, with that, again, this is our last meeting of the year, you all have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Again, thank you so much for the privilege of serving this great city, and with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We got a motion second, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all.